Good morning and welcome to the Carver County Board of Commissioners meeting, April 12th. Join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. This is the time of the meeting that we open it up to the public. So anybody from the public that wants to make a comment to the Board of Commissioners, now's the time. We allow you five minutes and we're here to listen. We won't respond to the comments that be made.
My name is Karen Johnson Lightner, 15735 38th Street, Mayor Minnesota. I have a thing you need to read. Never, never, never give up. This plaque is in my home. My good friend Mary Lou gave it to me when she figured out that she was going to die from breast cancer. At all times, she knew the 100,000 watt FM broadcasting radio tower that was put in our area in Hollywood Township was the cause of her cancer. Her doctor even admitted it. Too much radiation. So when you wonder why I keep on coming up here and you wonder what I'm doing, y'all and past and present Carver County people that let this conditional use permit come into our world, you all that have been here and got voted in or whatever it is, Dave Hemsey, you started it. I'm going to tell you, that plaque means gold to me. She meant gold to me. She came to meetings. She came here. She came everywhere. Other people came too. They're dead. So I gotta come alone or else the people are afraid of you. I want to address that we have to make some changes. You say maybe black lives let matter. My friend Sam Cook, because I met because of this John Linder conditional use permit, he has suffered. He has suffered because your conditional use permit was full of lies. John Linder was working with ABC Disney. He had to get rid of it. He sold it for $20 million. $17 million worth of profit. Y'all had put emergency communication on it and you started dealing with the devil. And instead of listening to people that's from Hollywood Township, the intelligent people, the people that came to those meetings, you decided, let's stick with the lie. Three attorneys, Dave Hemsey, sheriffs, but I'll give Sheriff Jim Olson a pass. I'm going to review Yes Money coming up soon. Yes Money is year-end savings. And year-end savings is where the taxpayers don't get to really make a decision. All the little goodies you guys are buying and making decisions. So this is going to be key to doing a wrap-up seat. And I will be doing Minnesota documentation of the rights to find out, but I'll do a lot of the research myself. I can go back to the meeting notes. I want to talk about unsolved police reports. Years ago in 2000 sabotaging the 100,000 watt radio tower. Bud Olson was going to get in contact with the FBI. Who did he blame? He blamed the citizens. Case never solved. Two times the Hollywood Township Hall had been shot at. Two different times. Case never was solved. Commissioner Lynch's friends put Karen and Al Lightner on police reports for sabotaging combines. We were on felony reports. Case never solved, but we had cops coming to our place. You seeing a pattern here? Get rid of people. Our pickup truck at the end of the driveway on a snowy night wasn't starting. So our mechanic took a look at it. Two bullet holes in it. Case never solved. One of the detectives who worked on the shooting of the hall was one of the highest-paid employees of Carver County. Close to the attorney, close to the sheriff, and close to Administrator Hemsey. And his cases were never solved. So CUPs are not being something that is fair to everyone. CUPs can hurt people. CUPs can change lives. I'm proof. So in other words, I'm saying to District Four, which is Tim length, you can't just treat your citizens you like and pay attention to them. Can't even look at me. Then pick and choose and then walk away from the people that you don't like what they're saying. Because you're up for election this year. If I were you, I wouldn't even run because the dirty laundry is going to pit out there for everyone. And you're going, that's not fair. Things that are happening to people are not fair. So here we go. Leftover COVID money. It's a great time to spend on a new emergency communication and get it out of Hollywood Township. Because what you're doing and what you're attaching to it, Lynch, it's on you.
Well, thank you very much. Anybody else wish to say a few words? Thank you.
I'm Nick Schultz and this is about the Bocklin CUP area. This is the sheet that talked about before it was approved. You guys have it. It says, what type of light will be used on the structure? There are numerous neighbors and windows and households and children and adults. And where would they be located? It's on the video. I'm a stargazer. I got four boy grandkids and we like to look at the stars. And on the backside of the shed, I voiced my opinion about no lights. And because you can literally do silhouettes 50 feet from my shed and do figures on my doors from these lights. You have to go like this to look at the stars because these are 5,000 watt or 50,000 watt lights. And he says it's for security because there's bad people in the neighborhood. JP, you were up at my house. Who's all the people in the neighborhood? You're looking at them. I'm the only guy behind the shed. So he's doing it. This guy is very, very agitated. He's a fireman and I don't know how he can be a fireman with a loose cannon. My wife does not. She's scared to death. She has a pacemaker and she has a heart problem. And when she mows the driveway down and weed whips, he has to walk along there to intimidate her. This ain't good, people. I know Tom, you stopped out there and talked to my wife and said, you guys got to work together and work this out. Well, it's real easy. You don't have to have lights on 24/7. I talked to Jason yesterday and I mentioned it for three years now. Put a motion detector on them. It's real easy. Only thing that's going to go behind the shed is when the deer comes from Milners and comes running all the way across because we see it, boom, they turn on for five minutes and shut off. You don't need them on. I was at the Dogren board meeting last night and his wife goes, yeah, we did walk back there. They are annoying. Well, shut them off. Well, he got obliterated. He went nuts at the meeting yelling at me. So then he turns around and turns them on, leaves them on all night. So this guy's a loose cannon. What I'm asking here today is Jason to work at it down there and get a motion detectors on the lights and please get them shut off. Because it is state law, verbal, verbal contract or what we talked verbally. Yeah, it got written up on here, but it's not written in there about the lights. But that was one of the concerns. I don't care what he has on the front or the east. He can have all the lights he wants because that's on the front. I can't see it. You have no reason to have them on the back. And the other thing, well, he's finally getting better and putting his stuff away, but he still leaves stuff out. But he's storing boats for other people, storing campers, his frickin' Conex box for two years. Oh, I got it sold. Well, apparently if the guy don't have the money, find someone else. Get rid of it. Told Jason, I said, well, he can't find no one to load. I said, I got all the equipment to load it all up. We don't want you there. Okay. Sorry about that. So I'm also asked, because my wife is totally terror of this guy, is if they don't want to see us, we don't want to see them, let's put up a fence. I'm asking for a forgivable grant for that $27,000 fence. I don't think I should eat the whole thing because this wasn't done because of me. You add, if you read your thing on a contractor chart, number one, will not use prime egg. Four acres of prime egg. That's number one. Number two, will not be on a gravel road. You had three people saying no. How many more did you need? And it got passed. I got shunned off. I spent $7,000 as a lawyer to be at one of the meetings and we got thrown out. Mark, he approved it all. And I know there's one guy sitting up here says, well, let's investigate that. Why you had a secret meeting at Dogren and passed it there without me being... Because I got all the witnesses and they said, no, there wasn't going to be a meeting until they had one at Carver County. It was going to pass. It was going to go right to Carver County, but then they go and pass it. So what I'm asking today, it's already done. Put motion detectors on the building. I know Jason's working on it, but they're saying only one. This weekend, how I got this all going is I got a lot of equipment. So I was going to give them a little taste of their own medicine. So I set up my light plant and shined it in the back of their house. Oh, they didn't like that and got the cops coming. But I'm going to tell you about his lights. I have a hutch in my room. The lights come in, hit the hutch and it just happens to reflect right at my eyes. Yeah. So I have to turn it. But what I'm asking today is look into, I would like a share on a fence to take care of that and take care of the lights.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Schultz.
Thank you.
Anybody else this morning? If not, I see Mr., our county attorney, Mr. Mark Metz wants to say a few words.
Oh, wait a minute. It could have been under community announcements. Let's go to community announcements. Or which, where does it better fit?
Doesn't matter. I just wanted to, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I just wanted to recognize two individuals and legal giants that we lost in the last month.
Please.
It was really sad that Judge Bob Goggins died in the last month. And if you recall, Judge Goggins was a judge here in Carver County for 15 years. And so he's been retired for about five to 10 years. But after he retired as a judge, he went into practice with his son and his daughter. And Pat Goggins and Colleen King were attorneys and that was the dream of his. And so they actually had a practice, a thriving practice in New Prague. And then Pat Goggins is a judge right now in La Sure County and Colleen King is a judge in Scott County. So it's a really great family and Judge Goggins was this Irishman that had a great sense of humor and was a lot of fun and was a really caring individual and just a good man and a big loss. And he was a big Wisconsin fan. So he loved all Wisconsin sports and the Green Bay Packers. So he was a wise, smart man, Commissioner Lynch.
Please delete the last 30 seconds.
So they had a really nice ceremony recognizing and celebrating his life. And then Washington County Attorney Pete Orpitt died less than two weeks ago. And Pete was 66 years old and he got diagnosed with stomach cancer 10 days prior to his death. And he had some stomach pain. He went in, he had COVID. He thought it was from that. And he had stage four cancer and he went into hospice and he died two Sundays ago. So it was a really big loss for the state of Minnesota and justice. And Pete was a really good friend and mentor to me in this office. He worked in the Carver County Attorney's Office in the early 1990s. And he was very good friends with our chief deputy, Peter Ivey. They started in 1985 together in Ramsey County. Had a painting business during the summer to make money called Pete Repeat. So, and difficult on him and others. And Orpitt was just bigger than life. He was one of a kind. He was an intense, passionate guy and he was a big motivation for me in starting our vets court. Because he was a Marine and he said, Mark, you got to start this vets court. And he was the first county attorney that I called in 2011 when we had a murder. And I asked him if he would consult with us and go over the case because he had done probably 20 murder cases in his career. And he was more than willing to do that. And he was the last county attorney I talked to to handle a conflict case three weeks ago on a serious violent offender. So Pete really will be missed and he's made a huge mark because he really believed in promoting justice and fair play and integrity. So it's a big loss for the state of Minnesota. So I appreciate the opportunity to recognize them.
Well, thank you for taking the time to recognize. These are important people, not only for yourself, but also for the justice system. And yeah, I personally knew those two guys too from the county and now Washington County. But yes, it's, we're going to miss them, but they had a good life. Any other comments to bring forth at this point? If not, we'll move on to with our agenda. Item number two, the agenda review and adoption. We have two changes. We will delete 6.2, the appointment of a community development agency person and add to the regular session 6.0, legislative update.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Workman, second by Commissioner Lynch to approve the agenda as amended. Any discussion? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Item number three, the approval of the minutes from the March 15th regular session.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Ruderman, second by Commissioner Fahy. Any discussion? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Community announcements. Commissioner Fahy.
Mr. Chair, thank you. I had the opportunity to attend the 68th Annual Carver County Dairy Day Dinner. It was a great event held in Mare last Saturday. And I just want to acknowledge the Carver County Dairy Princesses. Ali Dozi, Greta Weiss, Holly Weiss, Bella Carles, Hannah Clustameyer, Maya Clustameyer, Hannah Olson, and Jessica Tober, and also Katie Vinkermeyer. So congratulations to those princesses and they'll continue their journey. And it was a great evening just to get to talk with some of the remaining dairy farmers that we have in Carver County. The number is dwindling. I think there's 32 active dairy farms within Carver County, which is really unfortunate to see the decline. Also, last night I was at NYA City Council meeting and two firemen retired. So I just want to give a shout out to Andy Wakefield, who had been with the department for 23 years. And then Robbie Baumann, who was with the fire department for 20 years also. So thank, thank you to both of those gentlemen to, for their service to the city of NYA. And then also a big thank you to Joe Enfield with his retirement after 30 years with Carver County. He's done a phenomenal job and just a thank you to Joe. And then just personally wishing everyone a happy, joyous Easter week.
Other community announcements.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Ruderman.
Couple of them. Been a couple of weeks, so it might be a few minutes. Had a chance to see a pinning ceremony last week. Nine new sheriff's deputies were pinned. I'd never been to a ceremony like that. It's kind of emotional unexpectedly for me to see little kids and their dad is getting pinned or a mom comes up and pin or a spouse. And a couple of ladies were in the room that were pregnant and can't help but think that they may be the next generation of sheriff's deputies in Carver County. So applause for Jason for doing that. Sheriff Jason and all the efforts that he's done to try and fill the pipeline in a very challenging time. Kudos to Mark downstairs in the assessor's office and his staff. Somebody stopped me the other day and it was an unexpected comment, but they said, I've got 20% more equity in my house now. And I've never heard it spun that way because sometimes people like my property values are up average 20% in the county and they see it as a negative. But I think I might borrow that 20% equity on average. But I know that Scott County came out a couple of days before us. They had 600 calls within five days. I think our call total is probably more sizable this past week than we've had in the past. And I've overheard some of those calls that him and his staff are taking and answering those and explaining a very confusing thing sometimes for many people. So kudos to Mark and his staff. He's his first year in that role. And then Renee, Krista and Crystal, they're probably people you wouldn't hear much from, but they led our neighborhood Easter egg hunt this past weekend. And the reason I bring them up is because I use the words a lot, neighboring well. And I think that when you see these volunteers and these unsung heroes that are working behind the scenes, they make our neighborhoods what they are. So kudos to them and people that are planning things like that. Prairie Fire Theater came to the Chaska Community Center over spring break. And in five days, they prepared 50 kids for the performance of Peter Pan. Again, local theater organizations like that make our community even better. I think it's the 10th year in a row unofficially that the best fish fry in Carver County again is in District Three. Guardian Angels, and I have tried a number of the other ones, and I still think that Guardian Angels is the best. Had a chance to go to St. Joe's this week, this past week. I saw Commissioner Fahy there and dozens of other people. So it's fun to have events like that and see people out and about more and more frequency. Taxes and valuations, I set her out. I've got mine here. And it's interesting with our equity, our personal home equity is up 22.3% in '23. It can be really confusing, but as I pushed it down, I saw that the line for city taxes was up 7% on our property. School district was 8.3% and the county line, we were up one-third of 1%. And so when people are looking at their taxes, I think people are getting a lot of value on the county level. And those questions can be answered and asked. But our property is about the median house value. And so I know that there's a lot of variables that go into it. But I just thought it was telling that the county line was less than a percent and the other line items were north of that. And then one more thing, we just heard from our lead of communications that Carver County was noted as the lowest poverty rate in the state at 3.4%. If my recollection is correct, in years past, it was at 4.3% and we were not the lowest. I think it's bold and practical investments partnerships and leadership from the likes of Rod Frank's team, Dr. Scott's in the room and the collective staff, but also our partnerships with local not-for-profits have helped drive those results. It's never a finish line, but it's good to be the last on that list and know that some of the good hard work that we're doing in the county is helping those numbers. So, thank you.
Well said. Some lists you want to be on top. This is one that you want to be on the bottom. It's a nice place to be. Commissioner Workman.
Mr. Chairman, I sure wouldn't want to let it pass that the county assessor's office does not create equity in your home. You do. You work hard. You pay your taxes. You add on to your house, keep it, keep it in good shape. And people want it and that's what creates good equity. But I like, I like the diversion. You know, if we all rise and this group up here keeps playing it tight on the budget, there will be no trouble. Your assessor, you can do whatever it wants. But we, we're keeping a hard line on our spending and that's all that matters. So, back to Washington County. So a good, good Chaska boy ran Washington County for many, many years. He was in the Health and Human Services Department, Jim Shug. A good Guardian Angels boy, Chaska boy, grew up down by my grandparents down on Spruce Street. He passed away suddenly at age 72. I think suddenly. I don't know exactly how he did. I went to school with his brother to Guardian Angels, Dave Shug, who married a good Chaska girl, a Rob. So anyway, sorry for Washington County out there. Dave, Jim was a, was a good guy. I got the chance to sit with him a few times at some conferences. And now my, my kids from Kansas City moved to Stillwater. And so they're Washington people, but they're missing some real giants out there. The Chanhouse and Lions are having the best pancake breakfast in, well, the nation. And that is happening on Sunday, April 24th. This is the, this is the pancake breakfast that usually occurred with the fire department up there. Excuse me, in the, in the fire barn. Excuse me, in the, in the fire barn. The city has sort of withdrawn from some of these group outings. And so really, most unfortunately, we're gonna have to have this pancake breakfast at the Chanhasen Brewing Company, where they will be making a lovely maple beer to go along. I'm not sure what could happen. I hope the sheriff's department's listening. Sunday, April twenty-fourth. Gonna be a good time, pancakes and beer and whatever else you want in Chanhasen. Thank you.
Commissioner Lynch.
Obviously, I'd like to comment. I think that Commissioner Udoman, Commissioner Workman, even though well-meaning, have given some faulty information. By far, the best fish fry is Saint Joe's in Waconia. And Commissioner Udoman commented before that his kids agreed because they have soft-serve ice cream. Not only that, but then our pancake breakfast by the Waconia Fire Department on the twenty-fourth. At the Waconia Fire Department is gonna be, it's the best in the world because not only they have pancakes, but they also have French toast and sausage. It's absolutely wonderful. It's right next to the Waconia Brewery, so you could walk across the street. And also that JP mentioned Dairy Princesses. I would like to submit, comment that I have married a Dairy Princess. What year she was crowned, I, I forget, and I'm sure she doesn't want me to say. So with that, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, before this turns into a all-food show, I think we'll move right along. I was wondering why the Easter Bunny came so early to your place, but in order to get over to our place, I suppose it has to start someplace. We'd like to wish that, wish everybody a, a good Passover and a blessed Easter. And with that, I know we have a long agenda today, so we will continue on. We're moving on to the consent agenda. We have, excuse me, twenty-four items on the consent agenda. We start with the Watertown Restoration Project. We have a feedlot report, emergency management grant, an agreement for waste pesticide collection. We have Highway Crack Sealand Project. We have an agreement with Humanity Alliance. We have agreement for Highway Fifty Project, AIS Annual Plan, donations to the regional park, joint powers agreements. We have National County Govern-Month, Government Month coming up, or actually, yeah, coming up. Farmers Road Dedication, charitable gambling application for Ridgeview Foundation, for Zora United Church of Christ, and the Watertown Rod and Gun Club. We have an MOU with the CDA. We have a donation to the Encore. We have elimination of a lead position in environmentalist and create a senior position. We have revision to the county highway sign project, or put the policy, I should say. We have a high amenity conservation for four lots. We have a support of City of Waconia Subdivision Authority, letters of support for the road and bridge grants, agreement with the federal government relation strategy, and finally, our Health and Human Service Commissioner warrants. Is there anything that should be pulled and discussed separately? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So, so moved, Mr. Chair.
Motion by Commissioner Lynch, is there?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Workman. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Udoman.
Just a couple of comments. One, I wanted to call out the MOU of the CDA and the public works. It looks like a win-win-win. Sometimes we hear about, you know, land acquisition right away and all that other stuff, but it's a property owner that wanted to sell. It was a CDA that's able to facilitate it so we can use it for housing until it's needed for the road. So I thought that was great. Kudos to Brad, Greg and the team in the environmental services. Sometimes we don't elevate when reorganization or staffing is such that it gives a taxpayer's value, but twenty-three thousand dollars of the savings, that's not a small amount. And then finally, there's a lot of people on our planning commissioner that are relatively new, and I think they do a great job of preparing some of the things that were on there. Those are just a couple of examples I wanted to elevate and say thanks for serving in those capacities. Thank you.
Well said. And I think we have to mention that this is on the consent agenda because these are non-controversial items that have been vetted through the board. And like you say, if it's non-controversial, they all are brought to as one motion. We do have the motion, Commissioner Lynch.
If I could have one comment, I just want to have a shout out to Jeannie Hoffman and Brian Pitch. They graciously donated some of their wedding gifts for the continuing improvements on Coney Island. I just want to point out how important that Coney Island is to the city of Waconia, but also to the, the whole county of Carver.
Well said. Any other discussion items? If not, all in favor of the motion to approve the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Item six point zero.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner.
Could this be a good time for Representative Nash to?
That is it, six point zero.
Oh, is that what it is?
Uh huh. Our legislative update, we're very fortunate that Eastern Passover happens, so he has a little time off, and he's spending part of it with us. Representative Nash, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board and staff. Thank you for having me in this morning and adjusting the, the schedule to do so. Just wanted to come and give a brief legislative update. You, you may have heard, and the crowd may have heard, we have a little bit of a surplus.
Oh, really?
Yeah. So nine point three billion dollar surplus. And that is going to be occupying a huge portion of our time at the Capitol on what to do with it. And I'll just lay my cards on the table right now. I believe that the nine point three billion dollars that we have in surplus comes as a result of overtaxation of the people of Carver County and the people of the state of Minnesota. I certainly understand that there are people who would like to spend some of it. And I will tell both the commissioners and the folks in the crowd, nine point three billion dollar surplus and about ten point five billion different ways to spend it that's being proposed at the Capitol. And I used to do this when I was mayor in Waconia, and I'll do it now. All money that we spend comes from one of these. So that is my recommendation that that's probably where it should go back. So, but to that end, we, we do have some bills that we've been moving through the legislature that I have been carrying on behalf of different Carver County things. Have a number of projects that we are trying to get through the process for cities, not just in my district, but in the entire county. There are some projects for Watertown wastewater, New Germany wastewater, Cologne wastewater, the city of Carver, and the levee that they have there. And these are, in my estimation, and I believe most people's, critical infrastructure, and those are things that government should be doing. Those are the things that we need to get done as we are seeing rain on our forecast, or at least for the people in North Dakota, possibly three feet of snow, so lucky them. But we are seeing a good amount of weather heading our way, and that, that levee in the city of Carver is in need of being addressed. The different wastewater treatment plants are also quite important. Have a Highway Five project as well. Again, critical infrastructure, that is the role of government, that we should be dealing with roads and bridges and different pieces of infrastructure like that. I will tell you that some of you have made mention, I think some had wanted to come down and join me at the Capitol. Prior to the session starting, we were informed by the speaker that the State Office Building was going to be closed. And it was closed to the public. And I take my role very, very seriously. And for any of you that know me, I'm, I go out of my way to make sure that I'm available to the public. So I had to, to do a couple of stunts. I had to actually buy a card table, and I had a little graphic made, and I went and had office hours in the rotunda of the Capitol. Why, you ask? Because that's what the people need. I think Commissioner Workman zipped by me one day, and he was down there talking to different folks in the Senate, stopped by. The reason for doing so is that accountability, transparency, and availability is incredibly important to the people that I know that we live next to and that I serve and that you serve as well. And we are now to the point where the State Office Building is mostly open, and I'm not going to be happy until it is completely open. We are here in this chamber today. I don't think anybody's wearing a mask. I don't think that we are to the point anymore where those precautions are certainly not, not important, but that we, we need to recognize that government should be open and available to the people. So a number of other initiatives, I was hoping the sheriff was here, but the, the House Minority Party has been recognizing a huge amount of issues with how are we handling both crime, but also how are we honoring and working with our police? We have seen a huge number of steps backward, I would say. If you go into the city of Minneapolis, sometimes the city of Saint Paul, there is, there's not a lot of police around. And this is an issue that the legislature should and we are dealing with. But a number of things that we are, are talking about is how do we make sure that those people who are committing crimes are held accountable to those crimes? And I've spoken with Attorney Metz a number of times, and we don't have that problem here in Carver County, and I'm grateful for that. But what we're seeing in other parts of the state is actually creeping out here. And that is an alarming thing for me, as I know it is for you as well. And those are things that we should be dealing with, and we are. We're talking about those. But I didn't want to monopolize the entire time talking, wanted to make myself available to you for questions, because I, I do get questions from you fairly regularly, and I enjoy the relationship I have with each of you. You all reach out and, and bring things to my attention. So just wanted to make, make myself available to questions for the commissioners as well.
Anybody have a question they'd like to present to Representative Nash? Commissioner Workman.
Well, Mr. Chairman, Representative Nash is very accessible, certainly for Carver County and everything he's doing on our behalf. When I was a legislator, we didn't have any bonding needs. Nobody anywhere, well, and I had Minnetoka, and I had part of Eden Prairie. We didn't have them. I don't know, by last count, there might be seven or eight that are looking at Representative Nash and Senator Coleman and Representative Bowles. And, you know, as good, God-loving conservatives, bonding is a nice word for borrowing. I think I sent our county administrator a picture of the front page of the Wall Street Journal, muni bonds and borrowing rates are, are going up. The heyday of pretty cheap borrowing, at least for cities and probably counties, is kinda by the by. But knowing that sarcasm doesn't work at a public forum like this, I'll repeat, I'm against clean water in those communities. They, they are important. They're not sexy, they're not fun, but that's the system, and they, they do need those things. So I'm hopeful that what Carver, Carver County is being conservative in our asks is that these things all do sort of fall into different categories of, of borrowing. We'll take the cash. But, but highway bonds aren't GO bonds, et cetera. And so hopefully, we don't look like we're asking, and Representative Nash isn't asking for too much here, but they are, are all pretty dire situations. And finally, I did send an email out this week about, about it's really good that we can get some things done for that Highway Five Bridge by the Arboretum, but to not forget that Eighty-Second Street really needs to be done. And I think, you know, asking for ten million and us paying thirteen million is a pretty fair, by certainly state legislature standards, a pretty good deal on our part to get ten, spend thirteen of our own. So we're well positioned with Lyndon Robgent and everybody else. But it's, it sounds like the, I don't have any of those smart people in the room either, but it sounds like the, the Eighty-Second Street and even Highway Five would be in different bonding accounts. So that said, seven Carver County bonding projects showing up is, is a, is a big ask. And so good luck to you. Thanks for all you do and listening, and good to see you here.
And Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Commissioner Workman. I, I will say that a good number of bonding requests have come across my desk, and I, I do, I do turn some down, and other requests have come into Carver County that I will tell you I don't support. There is a request to put some money into a, a parks project that is not one of our parks. It belong, I think it's the Phyllis Wheatley Project. And just in talking to neighbors and other folks who have interest, that the amount of money that's being asked for is not going to accomplish what's, what's needed to get it open. So on things like that, I, I'm a, I'm a pretty solid no, and I do try to, to not blow them up, if you want to use that as a term, but I, I do try to, to speak some caution into the, into the reality that just because something looks nice doesn't mean that the totality of the project is being done. But to your point, there are things that are very, very important for the people of Carver County. And once again, just to stress how difficult it is to be in Carver County, sometimes at the terminal end of the Metropolitan Council that runs heavily roughshod over people that, that make it very, very difficult for cities like Watertown, New Germany, Cologne, Norwood Young America to actually get any benefit out of there. So I, I tell people that many cities in, in Carver County are effectively the ATM machine for the metro projects. And it is extremely difficult to be the mayor in one of those cities, or the mayor when I was in Waconia, and being patted on the head by the Met Council saying, thank you for your cash, but your projects are not going anywhere. So we do have to address those over time.
Other questions for Representative Nash?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I, I did not mention the Waconia Regional Park, which has been a lot of hair pulling for this award, to finally get that new pavilion and everything else done. And it's a regional park, Met Council kinda deal, and so add that to the, to the mix. And I, so I know you have a lot going on.
Commissioner Udoman.
Mr. Chair, Representative Nash, welcome to District Three. Yeah, you have a, a more sizable chunk of District Three, so it's good to see you here and out and about. Thank you for your efforts on vocational and tech. I think that given the rising costs of houses here, sometimes it's great for the people that can afford that half a million or six hundred thousand dollar house, but labor is, is definitely pushing some of these values. So I appreciate your focus and your networking within the vocational area. Happy to partner with you on that. Second of all, impress upon the, the need for that Eighty-Second Street and how high priority it is, as a relief valve for Five, also within the Chaska Corridor and the, you know, presentation of Costco on forty-one. Eighty-second is critical, and to get that match, those matching dollars, I know you're working hard on that, and that was one of our legislative priorities. And then finally, assuming that that nine and a half billion dollars isn't going to be returned to our pockets, it might be helpful to shine a light on the unfunded mandates that the counties have to shoulder. And I don't have a full dollar amount of what that means, but I know it comes up often is state mandates, and then we get to pay for it. And I know you opened up your wallet, and sometimes those dollars aren't all the same. There's a county dollar, there's a city dollar, there's a state dollar or a federal dollar. But if there's a way to get some more of those, if, if, if it's not gonna go back into the pockets to focus on those unfunded, I know that some of my peers in other counties are, are expressing the same thing. So thanks for being here, appreciate it.
Representative Nash.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Udoman. I, I will tell you, you mentioned the vocational trades. I have been a longtime proponent of this one reality that we have short-sold our children that are in high school by telling them that they all have to go to college to be full potential people. And that's just not the case. My kid graduated high school, went into the Navy. He is a combat medic with the Marines, and he is living proof of the fact that you don't have to go to college necessarily to have a good job. There are a great number of jobs in the trades, and I have been working on that since I carried a bill called VPSEO, so it's Vocational Post-Secondary Enrollment Option. Much like a lot of our kids that go to college while they're in high school, we should make it so that the laws of the state of Minnesota don't prevent somebody from working on a job site where they can learn a valuable skill. I recently was at Laketown Electric where they talk very, very much about the fact that if you come out of high school and you work for them for four years, that you can make a hundred thousand dollars in your fourth year with having zero college debt, and you have, you go straight into that. These are the types of things that both county officials, state officials, local officials, school officials should be putting on their radar as saying, there are some kids that will go to college, but there are some that don't want to go to college. And I think that the state really needs to address that, so I'll pick on all the farm kids that were up here on the dais. You can work in your family farm when you're fifteen, fourteen years old, and you can do that.
Tell me it just starts at fourteen and fifteen.
Well, but, but the state says.
I know, I know.
The state says that that's okay, but for you to go on to the job site, if you were in high school, to want to go and learn how to, to be a framer or be an electrician, suddenly more bad things are likely to happen. And I think that there's a real need for us to talk about, what does that mean? How do we fix that? So that kids who are in high school don't go down the road of a couple of our neighbor friends where they go to college for two years, take on a massive amount of student debt, only to raise their hand and say, yeah, I'd really rather be a carpenter, or I'd rather be an electrician. So those are things we have to work on.
Commissioner Lynch.
Are you implying that your father violated some labor acts when you were?
Not at all.
I, I have no specific questions for Mr. Nash. I contact, we talk quite often, but I, the office in the rotunda, you told me you were gonna do that, you did that. I thought that was absolutely wonderful. And I would like to say that I don't know of anyone who's more accessible than Representative Nash. I've seen him give his I've seen him give his cellphone on the podium. It's usually in all of his campaign literature. And, excuse me for the life of me, I have no idea how many people have his cellphone. And the thing, when you're with him, it rings constantly, and he answers each and every one of them. It's absolutely unbelievable. So he's about as accessible as you can possibly get. So thanks for coming in today.
Thank you.
Commissioner Fahey?
Jim, I want to thank you for everything you've done with Highway Five, and more importantly, Highway 212, with making all that come together. And I know recently, we've had some conversations about state statute, Section 103 with drainage. I appreciate that, and I continue to learn more, so thank you.
Oh, and thank you, Representative. You've always been helpful, not only for the county, but personally. Take two minutes to explain. You represent currently two of these members. In the future, that's going to change. How is your district, how is it changing?
Well, actually, I think I have three, because I do currently have part of Victoria as well. So my district got smaller because of the growth of our county. I think the city of Waconia now has like 13,000 official residents after the last decennial census results. So I will no longer have cities, I will no longer have Watertown Township, Hollywood Township. I lost New Germany, I lost Hamburg, I lost Norwood Young America. But I got pushed to the east a little bit, and I have all of Victoria now, and precincts one and half of precinct two in Chaska. So every legislative district is supposed to be roughly 40-some-odd thousand people based on what the population of the state is. That number floats a little bit, as I'm sure you all will have in your commissioner districts. But nonetheless, the needs of the people in Carver County are still very much on my mind, and if, whatever, if something comes up in a city that's currently in my district, I'm always happy to help, because I do help Representative Bowe with his stuff. And to Commissioner Lynch's comment, if, for those of you who are here, or those of you watching, my phone number is 952-807-6416.
See if it-
952-807-6416.
I'm going to dial it and see if it rings.
Yeah. I do take that very seriously, and ever since I was a city councilman in Waconia, I figured if I work for you, I should be available to you. So, and I do surprise people. As an insomniac, I'm oftentimes awake at four in the morning. I do take those calls as well. So if there are no other questions, Mr. Chair.
Thank you for coming in. Anytime you have something to share with us, don't hesitate to stop in.
And I would also say, come on down to the Capitol. A number of you are always happy to hop in a vehicle and come down. As we begin testimony in earnest about different types of bills that'll be now coming towards the floor, having folks from the district show up and say, "This is important," or, "No, this is not important," because oftentimes, spending is going to be layered on top of our citizens, and they should have a voice. So I always recommend that is your home, that is your house, the Capitol belongs to you. Show up, and we'll make sure that you get a voice.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Enjoy the rest of your self-called vacation before you go back to work.
Thank you.
With that, we'll move on to 6.1, the Dispatch Center Study. I'll kick it off by turning it over to Administrator Hemsey, and he'll introduce somebody else.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, Commissioners. I see Dr. Bruce Muller's on the phone, or on the call this morning. He'll be presenting. So why don't we call his presentation up, and we'll get him introduced. But first, I'd like to thank, in particular, the sheriff for his willingness to take a hard look at our dispatch center. This started out with a conversation between Matt Poteraski, the Chaska Administrator, Heather Johnson, who is the former Chan City Administrator, and I, and their concerns about fire departments and the growth, and are we doing the best thing we can to try and manage those services? And of course, we provide dispatch services to all cities. And as I discussed that with the sheriff, you know, we both, I remember the conversation was kind of like, geez, we're doing a pretty darn good job. And this study confirmed that. But there's always room for improvement, and we wanted to take a look at best practices, and there were a few things that we found through this study that we could improve upon. And, you know, communication is always one of those. No irony that it's a dispatch communication center. But this study is not only for Chan and Chaska, and we shared the cost of that between the three of us, but it's also for the rest of the county, because we do provide services across the county. So Dr. Muller will provide his report, summarize his findings, and then I do have one action item related to communications to follow up. So good morning, Dr. Muller. Can you give a brief background? I know it's pretty impressive with your service, and then jump into the presentation. Colin, are you going to call it up for him?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead, Bruce.
Welcome, Dr. Muller.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners, and thank you, Mr. Hemsey, for that kind introduction. He says my background's impressive. One of the partners in the firm likes to joke that I simply am a professional quitter. Actually, my background, I spent several years, many years ago, in law enforcement, but then switched to fire. The prevalent background I have is in the fire service, first in Illinois, outside Chicago, and then in South Florida. I became chief of several departments in South Florida, including Broward County, that's a county of almost 2 million, and then in the city of Sunrise, Florida, population just under 100,000. But subsequently, also became city manager near the end of my tenure in public service. I served as city manager for the city of Sunrise, as I said, population just under 100,000, and then moved to Pinellas County, Florida, which is in the Tampa Bay area, serving initially as the executive director of public safety, and then ultimately as, served as Assistant County Administrator and Chief of Staff. So from that background, diverse as it is, the firm Fitch and Associates is an exclusive public safety firm. All it does is public safety projects, EMS, fire, law enforcement, and 911. And so I'm going to keep my, I'm going to move through this relatively quick, but I would ask any of the commissioners, should you desire, please feel free to stop me. There is a lot of good news in this and some opportunities. So if we can, Colin, am I driving this, or are you driving the PowerPoint? Okay, if we can do the next slide, then. So just as an executive summary, I need to say that there's many positive things in the system today. It performs well overall. The Emergency Communications Center, ECC, you'll see that. And my understanding is the administrator did make available a copy of the report to each of you, but the ECC or 911 Dispatch Center uses current technologies and appears engaged. From a system-wide perspective, I'll say this, and doing studies in communities as large as Houston and Dallas, and communities like yours, and even smaller counties, the use of a single dispatch center, because as we understand, our communities are much more mobile than they used to be. Individuals may live in one city or town or township and work somewhere else, so that is a best practice. And the challenge, though, always remains, as I'm sure your commission is well aware, is that balance between taking that regional perspective, but at the same time attempting to address the individual needs, concerns, and desires of local, you know, townships and cities, et cetera. So in addition to that, we see increasing workloads and changing community expectations that provide an opportunity to further improve the system. Next slide, if we could, Colin. So in that regard, one of the things that we do is we're a very data-driven firm. One of the things we did is we pulled multiple years of data out of your computer-ended dispatch system, CAD is what it's referred to as. That's the system the 911 dispatcher is used to take incoming calls and then assign them to the appropriate unit. In the top four or five lines, and you'll see the gray bar up near the top, law enforcement calls. We look at them both from incidents and responses. So law enforcement in 2018 had 47,648 calls, dropped just a smidge in 2019, then in 2020 dropped about 4,000 calls. Not unusual in light of COVID, but we don't just look at incidents. In other words, an incident is an event that causes somebody to request assistance from the community, but we also look at the responses. How many units are necessary to handle that? We do that because the individuals in the dispatch center have to pay attention both to the event and each of the public safety resources, whether it's police officers, sheriff's deputies, or fire units that are going. We look at the average number of units that are sent per call for law enforcement. On the far right, it's 1.3 units per incident that they send. For fire, not surprisingly, and very typical, it's about three units for each incident. And each of the agencies are listed there, and so that's the overall workload. Also quite common, if you look at this slide for just a second, is you'll see that about 90, 80 to 90% of all activity that occurs in the 91 centers for law enforcement. So that's fairly typical. Next slide, please. But as we look at the quantitative analysis, I want to pause for a second here, and I don't want anybody to have flashbacks to high school algebra or any basic statistics courses. But when looking at public safety system, oftentimes elected bodies such as yourself may want to know how well the system's performing. Now, in the public discourse, I'll always talk about average response time. How long is the average it takes to answer the phone, or process a call, or get somebody to help? But when we design and evaluate them, what we want to look at is the 90th percentile. In other words, what is the performance for 90 times out of 100? We do that because if you look at the upper, the graph on the upper part of this slide, if we assume an average target, by definition, an average, assuming a normal distribution, it means 50% of the time, you're going to miss the target, right? If it's an average. Therefore, we designed the system to be effective at the 90th percentile. We always recognize there's outliers, there are times when extraordinary circumstances occur, severe weather, major events that may impact. But we do that so that the community can have a higher degree of confidence in the services that they're receiving from public safety. Next slide, please. So in looking at that, one of the first things that we look at with regard to staffing has to do with how quickly you answer the phone. Now, there is actually, in some states have a standard, but within the US, there's two major bodies. One's the National Emergency Number Association, the other is the National Fire Protection Association. They recommend that calls get answered within 15 seconds 90% of the time, and within 20 seconds 95% of the time. The call volume that you have coming in, when somebody dials 911 anywhere in Carver County, the time it takes to answer, which is used as a surrogate for whether you have sufficient staffing, is extremely high. This is some of the best results I've seen. This information came directly out of the 911 telephone system, and so within 10 seconds, you're doing it at 97% of the time within 10 seconds. The standard is 15 seconds, only 90% out. So there's no real issue there. The graph on the left, the bar chart shows you the number of 911 calls. Of course, the system is, in these centers, reflects not just the 911 calls, but also the non-emergency numbers that are used either by alarm companies or individuals calling, then a non-emergency number for, you know, lower priority issues and then outgoing calls. Next slide. And so when looking at that performance, the table you see there shows the average or the mean performance, and then the 90th percentile, and how many calls were there. A couple of things of interest. So there is recommendations, and there's a significant difference, you'll notice, between fire and law. This is typical. Fire services and ambulance services, EMS services, are very focused on time. For both fire and EMS, it is standard to try to, you know, process calls as quickly as possible and to get there as quickly as possible. That has been an historic construct. What the literature shows us today is actually only about 5 to 10% of the calls require that really, really rapid response. Cardiac arrest, major trauma to the main torso of the body, et cetera, and can have a positive outcome. So the performance there, there are some recommended practices. One of them is, for fire, is at the 90th percentile, you should be processing calls within 60 seconds. And this graph reflects that. But there is a caveat. The caveat is that because of the way the system is designed, you transfer the caller in many cases. In some cases, you transfer the information to Ridgeview Ambulance to their dispatch center. And that call transfer has to occur, and the incident actually doesn't get, has actually been going on a little bit longer before the incident record is created. So these numbers may be a little artificially deflated. We'll talk about that under the technology section. For law enforcement, law enforcement is very concerned, obviously, about public safety. There's just 1 or 2% of calls. I think the sheriff would probably agree close, hopefully, to that, but certainly less than 5%. They really have that urgent nature. Many calls to law enforcement are simply reporting something that needs to be documented, or it is an event that happened historically, and they want an officer or a deputy to come out and to handle it. So the time taken for that, it's also typical in law enforcement, that when a call comes in, you may take the information and then hold the call, because it's a lower priority, hold the call until that unit, that police officer or sheriff's deputy from that area is available. If you didn't do that, what would happen over time, and has happened historically, is deputies keep all migrating, or law enforcement keeps migrating to the same area, and pretty soon, when you have an emergency call, they've all got to try to rush back to their primary zone. So this difference is normal that we see. The one thing that is probably most significant is, at least with regard underneath fire, EMS-related calls requiring a response both from the fire department and Ridgeview Ambulance, is likely somewhere, based on what we observed in the center looking at it, and also based on research that I've actually been involved with currently with the University of South Florida, maybe another 60 to 90 seconds longer. So that primary to secondary piece, that transfer that we talk about, is something I'll come back to in the technology area. Next slide, please. So recommendations, there's a number of recommendations. Again, I'm not going to spend a lot of time. I'll just hit the highlights and certainly take questions from the commission. Three separate areas, operational technology, and then the third one, policy and budget. Next slide. But with regard to operational, let's move and look at that first slide within this area. These are issues largely under the control of the, next slide, if we can, Colin. These are issues mostly within the control of the sheriff's office and the public safety agencies themselves. So the current staffing in the 911 center, the ECC, as I refer to it in the report, is for a minimum of three personnel during the daytime, two at nighttime. The center does not use what we call a dedicated call intake position. So many times, we'll recommend that one person, when you have three people in the center, one of them is assigned to the law enforcement channel, one of them is assigned to the fire channel, and the third one will fill in or assist as needed. But there's not a clear delineation. We do make a recommendation that when there's three telecommuners on duty, one should be designated as the primary person to answer the phones. It is not because of a concern in performance and answering the phones. What we worry about is a conflict between one individual attempting to be on a telephone call while simultaneously needing to be listening to and handling radio traffic. So the telephone versus the radio, that's the reason for this. It's a no-cost issue, but it's simply an operational piece. Next slide, if we could. For most incidents, and as I indicated, 80, 90% of the time, incidents are related to law enforcement, so this graphic kind of shows the way it works. The event occurs, somebody calls 911, it's answered, they obtain the address and the incident location of the incident, and then the incident type, units are notified, they respond, and that's it. And so that's a fairly straightforward way for calls to handle. Next slide. With regard to fire and EMS-related calls, it's a little more complicated. One element that happens is that we noticed in our observations while on-site was that the workflow requires a separate CAD or the computer incident record be created for law enforcement, and then a separate one for fire. And so there's probably a little bit of overcounting that occurs when both law and fire have to respond to the same incident. For example, a vehicle accident with injuries. In addition to that, that manual transfer of medical calls over the Ridgeview does introduce some delay in call processing times. Now, as I indicated, the medical literature, peer-reviewed research, does reflect that this impacts only a very small percentage of calls, but in those calls, we're always sensitive to that and see if there's opportunities to improve that. Next slide. Within training and quality assurance, quality improvement, again, we just looked at documents, how individuals are trained, how current the literature is, the format. There's a series of recommendations, I won't read them, but really to kind of distinguish between work rules, those elements related to an employee and expectations as an employee working in the sheriff's office and the other set, really dealing with the training of those individuals, quality assurance, and quality improvement. It's, for lack of a better term, tightening up, because you have a lot of those elements in place, in fact, essentially you have all of them in place, but just making sure that they are current, periodically reviewed, and that also, there is an added, ongoing training piece, that once somebody's trained, that there's still periodic refresher of elements. Next slide. Same as I indicated with policies and- Uh, same as I indicated with policies and procedures, we do want to see a distinguishment between that. It, it appeared there was, um, for some individuals, at least for me as an outsider observing, but one or two individuals indicated sometimes they're not 100% sure where to find the information. So it's really, uh, making that information immediately accessible and for everybody to be clear on where it occurs or where it's located. Next slide. And then finally, uh, what we saw was incident types. On the left, two columns are all the various types of events that a dispatcher, 911 operator will have to put into the computerated dispatcher computer system in order to generate a response. You'll see, for example, um, what those are, they're ranked in order of how frequently they occurred during 2020 and the far right two columns is the same or the, uh, fire. One of the things we see when you have a lot of options to choose from, despite looking at it without really reading it, you see there's a lot of options for the operator to do. To understand that sometimes it's getting too granular, it, it's a challenge for the operators. Again, you want to try to, uh, only use a different category when it's going to generate a different response. A number of these, uh, in our opinion, could be collapsed, consolidated, making it a little easier for operators to leave, move through the process and to assign the appropriate resource upfront. So, um, next slide if we could. One area in that piece has to do with what we call call interrogation. When somebody dials 911, the, the, the practice and one that you follow is the first two questions you need to ask are what's the telephone number you're calling from and what's the location where the incident's occurring? You need the location to send resources. We ask for the telephone number, that's the recommended practice, uh, because in case there's a disconnect. The third thing you need to know is what is going on and who to send. That call interrogation piece, uh, in your center, like the majority of them across the nation, occurs through training and experience of the person answering the phone. However, historically, what we've recognized many, many years ago, um, who was actually on the telephones handling calls were police officers, sheriff's deputies, firefighters, either they were on light duty or they were assigned there. And they had expertise and knowledge of what type of events. Today, we hire people and train them that maybe last week were doing something else that has nothing to do with public safety. And so the best practice in the industry is to use a standardized process by which to take those calls. There are two major systems out there. Uh, either one of them is fine and we recommend that while some agencies do an elaborate amount of work developing their own protocols, there are commercially available products out there that allow you to ensure that when the call comes in, it doesn't make a difference which operator answers the call. They're going to get asked largely the same questions in the same order and come to the same conclusion on what's needed. For that, um, uh, that is both a, a valid and defensible, um, process to use. So we recommend that the, uh, ECC, the sheriff's office explore adopting one of those nationally recognized systems. It would be much easier than, than trying to develop something in-house. Next slide.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner.
Um, if I, if I could, Mr. Muller, um, you said the first question is the telephone number, uh, and in case you get disconnected, I understand that, but don't you already have that? Because if Matt, if Matt calls me, I go, oh God, it's him. Then I answer, oh, hey Matt, how you doing? You know, great.
Yes, yes. Uh, you're absolutely correct, Commissioner. Um, however, there are some exceptions to that and I'm, I'm actually, uh, very involved at the national level and, and I have some pushback on that. Actually, the questions are the address and the telephone number, you often have the flexibility. There are systems of VoIP, Voice Over IP. There are also commercial systems in, uh, let's say in office building where somebody may call you, the number to that desk, the number to that building is not the number that appears on your caller ID. It is a, and it's a generic number. And so for those small number of cases, and you're correct, 80% of calls today come from cell phones and the overwhelming of number of those, you have the actual number. So you're correct. Um, technically, the standard requires you ask the question twice, but if it's on the screen and the person tells you that's the number, that's considered the validation. So that's a great question, but there are, uh, Voice Over IP will represent maybe 5 to 8% of the calls within an urban suburban, you know, community. Uh, in your community, maybe a little bit less, but if you had, uh, office parks, et cetera, you may not get the correct number.
Thank you for that, thanks.
Yeah, and, uh, back up two slides, you had a whole bunch of incident numbers and then you had a couple that were underlined in different colors, red and blue. Was there any reason why some of those were underlined in different colors?
Colin, can you go back, uh, to the slide with Commissioners, uh, referencing one more, I think it was?
Nope.
This one?
Yeah, you got drunkenness and you have, uh, imminent childbirth and they're underlined with different colors.
Yes.
That's what?
Yeah.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah. Yeah. The abbreviations used, exactly correct, yeah. It's just a spelling issue. I probably should have turned that off with this slide, the creation of this slide, but uh,
No problem, I thought it had so big significance, okay.
Understood, thank you. Thank you for paying attention. Uh, Colin, if we can go then to technology, so let's go to the next slide. I'm going to talk about some technology issues for a few minutes and again, most of these aren't going to require. I, I will tell you, uh, the county is extremely fortunate that you, uh, take advantage within the metropolitan region of utilizing regional and state resources. Um, the, the dispatch center shares, uh, utilizes a shared Motorola Vesta 911, uh, system. Uh, it employs the state's what we call EZNet next generation 911, all elements, um, while, while it's not fully deployed, you've got all the pieces, you're well ahead, you're probably within the top 5% of the technology you're using, both for the 911 telephone system and also for the radio system that's utilized. Uh, the radio system's part of a region wide, uh, in case of, uh, and, and I don't have to explain this to your county, in case of something significant happening in the, in the, uh, greater metropolitan area, you have the ability to move fairly seamlessly between different, uh, public safety agencies and share resources because you share the technology. The two things that we did note, uh, as I noted a little bit before, was this call transfer between your center and up to Ridgeview ambulance, so that's one. And because of that, uh, it doesn't allow for an accurate capture of some of the timestamps you may want to have. That's not a huge problem. Um, one of the other issues that happened was, was very unusual because I didn't understand why something was happening in the center. Um, the sheriff's office, the communications manager in the sheriff's office were extremely supportive, uh, very transparent. Uh, they actually encouraged me because they couldn't explain this one piece, reached out to the CAD vendor. It was identified that the CAD, that the computer dispatch had a missing configuration file because I called and said, why doesn't your system do this? That's unusual for a, uh, public safety, uh, computer system. And they said it does. Um, they were concerned with what I shared with them, they went and they looked at it. It's a, it's technical, but it was called a multi dispatch function. They had recognized that somehow in something that had been done over time and it would have come from their side, there was a, a, a loss of a file that was needed to ensure that happened. They almost immediately fixed that item, uh, discussed it with the sheriff's office, uh, personnel and 911 were able to correct it. So there was, something was going on that made it a little bit more difficult. Um, that's the reason sometimes you do these outside reviews because we identified something, uh, it was a missing functionality that was available, so it was quickly identified and taken care of, no cost obviously.
On this slide,
Next slide.
You mentioned MESP.
Oh, certainly.
Uh, do you work with, uh, MESP a lot?
We, we do not. We've done a number of projects and I think I've got another one up in the area. I have not worked with them directly. Um, uh, but we've done, I think this is the fourth or fifth project we've done within, uh, the area that would encompass MSPs and ESPBs service area.
Okay, and then you mentioned Motorola, the Vista 911. Uh, is that a problem when everybody is on Motorola? I mean, it's almost like a monopoly in certain areas that it's, nobody else competes with them.
Um, well, actually there is, there's a, a two, there's two major vendors, probably, or I should say the two largest. Motorola, uh, owns a, owns a product line called Vesta 911, it's, it's the telephone system. Um, and it connects to the public, uh, telephone network, the local exchange carriers. The other one is called Entrada Viper. They're the two largest, there's three or four other significant national players. Um, the advantage of this, of having a unified system though, at least in this, is the redundancy. If a call, for some reason, somebody were to hit a cable out behind the building, um, if something were to happen to the physical building itself, the calls can instantly be rerouted to another facility. You've got that set up, but for some reason, the call couldn't get into your center because of physical damage or something happened, the calls are automatically rerouted because you share that background system. So it's actually an advantage in that regard. Uh, next slide if we could, Colin. So, um, we just recommended the staff verify the functionality. I would suspect, uh, since we've identified this, that Susan and her team down in the dispatch center have done so. So we can go to the next slide. Um, and we also went up and, and, uh, talked with Ridgeview Ambulance, went up and looked at their, their dispatch center. There is some connectivity, um, as I said, in sharing information. Uh, they do use a different computer dispatch system because they, while they provide service, obviously in Carver County, they do provide services in some other counties or parts of other counties. Um, one of the things has to do with the map, the underlying map. Maps are kind of a big thing in, in public safety because we have to know where we're going and when agencies share map, uh, they indicated they had some challenges in, in, um, identifying some calls within Carver County. We made some recommendations, we talked to, uh, your existing CAD vendor, we talked to their existing CAD vendor, made some recommendations for a little more collaboration with the GIS or mapping people, um, and to assist, uh, Ridgeview ambulance. We also looked to see, uh, in identifying this problem of the time it takes to manually transfer a caller from one to the other, to see if, uh, there was an opportunity in our observation to make that better. And then dealing with the, uh, computers that are in the, uh, law enforcement vehicles, police and sheriff's office. And we just noted, um, while you've got a number of fire departments that are predominantly or exclusively volunteer, uh, a few of the agencies either have full-time personnel 24 hours a day or they have full-time, or they have daytime staff. And for those law enforcement agencies, we noted that they, um, don't take advantage of those same mobile computers. So the next slide. So the recommendations coming out of that was to work with, as I said, Ridgeview ambulance. If the sheriff's office in the county could work with them to try to help them with the base maps that you're sharing, when you both have an address, it, it's what we call Geo validates in the computer system and everybody knows where they're going and the same routing, that you work with them also to see if there's an opportunity to do what's called a CAD to CAD interface. In that way, the caller would not have to be transferred. Um, one of the challenges, and, and it's a common configuration, this primary, secondary PSAP is our public safety answering point piece, but it's difficult for an individual who calls 911 to get help and finds out they've got a medical emergency and they tell their story and then the 911 operator has to say, hang on a minute, I'm going to get you, you know, the ambulance. And they transfer the caller and now the caller must start all over again because Ridgeview has to ask the same questions. Where, what, what's the phone number, what's happening? And if there's a way to do that, um, cost effectively by sharing information between the two computer systems, it's a technical, highly technical issue, but it can be done depending on the vendors. So we suggest they look at that. And then finally, for those agencies, fire agencies with duty or station crews as they're referred to as, uh, to start increasing the use of the mobile data terminals, it reduces radio traffic on the radio system, ensures information is actively transmitted. So those are the recommendations there. Next slide.
Quick question, you mentioned Ridgeview many times, uh, did you work at all with St. Francis? That's.
That's what, I'm sorry, Commissioner?
That's Shakopee, St. Francis in Shakopee.
Um, no, did not work directly with them. Ridgeview was the primary, um, uh, ambulance provider that we worked with.
Thank you.
Certainly. So let's talk about best practices. There's only a few more slides left, but I think these are probably the most salient and, and one leads to the issue that the administrator made reference to. Um, this one will have some little cost, will have a cost to it. Um, uh, the schedule that they have, um, provides, they have three full-time supervisors and people work essentially 12-hour shifts, either 12-hour days or 12-hour nighttime. What we do recommend is we believe it's always important within the 911 center to ensure, uh, that there is a, always a designated supervisor. So the recommendation is that there's a fourth supervisor position, be approved within the budget for the sheriff's office and concurrently, anytime that supervisor is off, there is a designation of an acting supervisor be made so that there is always somebody in the center, you know, three, two, three people, you know exactly who's responsible for what goes on in that center. Um, sometimes us, uh, large events or significant events, notifications have to be made, et cetera, et cetera. So it's just, uh, it's a command and control issue that in public safety you would want to see in place. Uh, next slide. And then that leads us to a slightly more complex issue and I think one of greater interest to the commission. Is, is indicated in recognizing your system, each community within the county and the county overall, you benefit, uh, from the single, uh, 911 dispatch center ECC. It's a best practice to have regional 911 services. It provides greater response capabilities, lower cost, enhanced technologies, all of those are there. In your configuration, as in other parts of the country, the county funds that, you fund it, um, and the sheriff's office operates it. And as I indicated before, as residents move in a much more mobile society, but that issue, it did raise an issue and it was raised to us when we were onsite and then talking with key stakeholders, is sometimes it was, uh, unclear by the public safety agencies themselves, whether they were partners in this or customers. And so, um, that, what I refer to as role confusion sometimes, um, can sometimes happen. It's something that isn't all that unusual. Uh, next slide if we could, Colin. So, uh, there really, I need to bifurcate and I, I know the county commission will, will appreciate this. There are policy level decisions that have to be made that are exclusively the purview of the county commission. Um, but operational oversight, uh, largely day-to-day operations are largely, uh, uh, provided or embedded with the county administrator and through the county administrator to various department heads. Within public safety, we expect police chiefs and fire chiefs, the sheriff obviously is a law enforcement, uh, the chief official of law enforcement, we expect them to worry about the operational perspectives. Um, in operational oversight, I will tell you 90, 95% of the questions that occur, what should the policy be? Should we change the codes that we're using in the computer system? What resources should we send? What radio channel? All of those are operational issues. Those are things that are items that I would not expect nor would I recommend go any, have anything to do with the county commission. To be quite frank, they don't have a need to be dealing with, uh, either city managers or the county administrator need to worry about that. Occasionally, occasionally, issues will arise that will either A, have a significant policy issue, or B, there'll be a significant technology or cost associated with it. And that cost or technology or policy question really is the purview of those responsible for establishing policy. And so we have to bifurcate operational needs, day-to-day things, from those issues that are going to require either funding or a policy level decision. And it's that differentiation of those roles that we have recommended elsewhere and has been very effective elsewhere. The next slide if we could. And so the recommendation we made was a, a step, these can be modified some, but basically what happens is within, uh, frequent discussions, monthly or every other month, with basically representative from each of the public safety agencies. Each of them has a seat at the table, they can raise issues, how do we handle responding to a structure fire? What if we need water in an unhybridated area? What do we do for an active shooter event? All of those are operational issues and those individuals would discuss those and come up with them. Many times they'll include the chief, sometimes they won't include the chief, the sheriff himself, I would not expect to be in those, some of the fire chiefs, the police chief, I wouldn't. It may be somebody in their staff. Ultimately, they will come up with a solution for 90 to 95% of these issues. And when they do then, step two, the end user approval, this is referring to the operational, the chief of department, right? And the ECC manager would say, okay, we can make this happen, this is the policy, let's approve it, let's move on. As I indicated, there will be times when there is a fiscal need, there is cost associated with it. When dollars are associated with it, while the police, uh, uh, you know, the sheriff, certainly the fire chiefs would, would like that to be funded, the needs in the 911 center are funded by the county commission. Um, they're the responsibility of operating with the sheriff. And so they need to elevate that issue up to what, uh, referred to, what I referred to in the document as a chief administrator officer. It would be the, the lead elected or appointed official by those governments, it would be the county administrator, it would be the sheriff, it would be the city managers. Uh, those issues would rise up to those levels, just like they do in so many other issues that are either inter, dealing with intergovernmental issues between, uh, the county commission and various communities within your county or whenever even in- communities within your county, or whenever, even internally within the county or internally with the city. Certain issues will percolate to the top. When they do, this just simply recommends a formation or creation of a group that allows the sheriff and the county administrator to have that discussion with the parties. And to the degree necessary, they will then offer a recommendation to the sheriff, if it's an operational issue, if it's a funding issue, also to the sheriff and the county administrator. And so it helps clarify, it ensures that in those rare cases where there is a need that the voices of that local government is able to be heard and the concerns can be raised, and it just formalizes the process a little bit. Oftentimes, these things are not necessary when certain parties have relationships and everything is fine, but over time, people come in and out and it establishes a framework that I think is effective in the long term. That really is commissioners, and I really do thank you for your time. That's the conclusion of my presentation. I'm happy to answer any additional questions that you may have.
Any questions for Dr. Muller?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Udoman.
You ever get called doctor dispatch? Just kidding.
Well, you're the commissioner. I'm a professional quitter, so yes.
So I, I sort through all this stuff and I've had those professors where you turn in an A and they're looking for an A+. And it looks like you got a few areas we can make it, but it looks like from my simple mind, if you give Sheriff Camerud a grade, it'd probably be A, A+, with a few sprinkles of areas for opportunity. Is that about right?
Yeah, no, it's clearly an A. The only reason not an A+ is you'd almost have to be 100%. I'm a tough grader. I, I'm a very tough grader. I, I will tell you that I think your system performs much better than, you know, the great majority of systems that I've reviewed. The firm does a lot of 911 work. I, I'm the lead for the firm with regard to 911 studies. I was very impressed, not just with the people, but, but what had already been in place. Again, we pointed out a few things that I think can just make it more resilient maybe. And so it's a clear A for the center and those few minor things, many of which I suspect in talking with the sheriff and the county administrator and the communications manager, even after I delivered this initially to them. I believe many of these have already been done in one form or the other.
A couple of questions, and I'll probably do them rapid fire, but one of them is compare, I've heard in Hennepin County, they could wait three, four, or five hours for a response on some things. And I've, my understanding is the service level expectation of the residents in Carver County may be higher than in, in other counties. Do you, do you have any anecdotal or data to support that, that we're, we're the best?
I, I don't have any anecdotal information. I will tell you that, that resource constraints are the most significant. There are many other counties and dispatch centers that will not perform as well in answering calls and dispatching the calls. The second element is then you've got to support, you have to have sufficient resources in the field to respond, but no evidence that you have any challenges in any of those areas within Carver County.
Next question I had was redundancy. I've done a ride along with Chaska PD and the sheriff's office, and it pains me every time you show up to a call, it feels like there's five vehicles. Couple of fire guys show up, AM, emergency vehicles, et cetera, et cetera. Is that statutorily required or is that just how we function? That's number one from redundancy. Second of all, I know it comes up once in a while with Scott County, not necessarily from a cost savings perspective, but from a ability to hire in, in a hard-to-hire, hard-to-retain space across the United States. Is there opportunities where we're redundant with Scott for function, but also the potential for being less redundant in partnering with, with the likes of a Scott County to address the potential headwinds of hiring in the next five to 10 years in this space?
Yeah, so, so with regard to the first question dealing with redundancy within regard to units showing up, those are policy questions. Often they're not statute, well, sometimes there's a statutory basis, depending on what the event is. If you have a violent domestic and somebody needs medical care, you're going to have multiple units. Many times we don't, we're not 100% sure what's coming in, so it's not unusual to see police and fire on the scene together. Normally, one of those disciplines can clear relatively quick once they are on scene and view what the incident is. With regard to Scott, Scott County, you actually do have a relationship with them for backup and it provides that resilience. The, the challenge with recruiting and retaining personnel within 911, as it is in law and most of public safety, is extremely difficult now and competitive, so you have to pay attention to that. You do, there may be an opportunity, we did not evaluate, whether the consolidation or working more collaboratively then will work. I do know that your relationship allows that if either one of those centers is severely damaged, they do help and rely on each other for resilience. It's, I'm a big believer in having at least a couple centers that have that relationship. That way, if one of them has a problem, there's another live center to immediately start taking calls and to get on the radio system. That, that's the value of the regional radio system and 911 system you have.
And then the last question I had is, is about cost, cost of the review, which I think we can figure that one out internally, but cost of implementing your recommendations and then future cost, as our, as our county grows, because we're the fastest-growing county in the state, is the need in this office, we're good for a while? I came from Best Buy World where it was like, okay, well, if you, if you've got five deep products on the shelf across all of your stores, you're overstocked. You don't, it's too much. So when I see 99.9%, I'm like, okay, we're better than good, but are we too good? Is it, are we spending too much money there? And so my question is, is about, are we overstaffed? And if so, what does it look like for the next five or 10 years? Is it a linear increase in staffing levels here? So those are the, the questions cost-related for me.
Yeah. So from an operating cost, I don't believe you're overstaffed. I think you're staffed appropriately, except for the additional supervisor. That, that's a supervisor issue. It is to ensure that there's always somebody responsible, you know, kind of the captain of the ship for that hour, even in the middle of the night. But the staffing levels are appropriate because you get those bumps, right? You know, you'll go along and have, you know, eight, 10 hours of fine, and then all of a sudden, there's a major accident. There's a, there's an active shooter. There's something that happens that requires everybody in the center to work. So I think your staffing levels are correct. The, the recommendations in here, the most substantive ones that we made were for the fourth supervisor, so one additional position. That's not a, one additional FTE that would be provided under this. The second, probably the most substantive cost is the call interrogation software we talked about. There's two major vendors out there, depending on which one you choose, and there's advantages and disadvantages of each. There's an initial capital cost. I, I don't think it's, it's terrible. And then ongoing minimal cost associated with both of them. So those are the most expensive. The Ridgeview Ambulance interconnectivity, again, that's a kind of a one-time cost if it's technically feasible. So there's not a lot of money here. You're staffed right. What you have is capacity. You have some capacity. You can grow and you can probably take on, and again, I, we did not model this fully, but I, my estimate is between 25 and 50% growth, and you would not have to reinvest in the system, at least not in the 911 system.
Well, thank you for your professional insights on this one, and thank you for Sheriff Camerud for taking this on. I know that it's come up in a couple of areas. Others haven't taken it on, so thank you for that. And the results were exactly what I'd expect. We're doing great. So thank you.
Other questions?
Thank you.
Richard Lynch.
If I could, sir, I was just kind of curious if Commissioner Udoman, when he did his ride-along, was that after he got arrested?
I got to wear some.
Not voluntary.
To try out the cuffs.
No, I just want to point out that it's, it's good to get bang for your buck. We invest in the sheriff. We invest in this. And kudos to the sheriff. He's a lot like the county administrator. You surround yourself with wonderful people and he comebacks. We get a, and a third party in here. He's objective. He doesn't have any biases. And he comes in, gives us an A. Are there things to work on? Absolutely. There's always something to work on, but I think that kudos to the sheriff and his staff for the, the great job they've done with this.
Other questions? Very good. You're an outsider. You're looking in. We have sheriff, we have fire, we have administrators, we have city managers. They all have TERFs. Did you see a good working relationship or did you feel some TERF battles that underlie that nobody really is supposed to know about?
So I worked in the Chicago area and then in South Florida and then Central Florida. And I've worked in counties that have.
Good answer.
Thirty, I think the largest had 31 communities. I think the working relationship was quite strong and very positive. There were a few minor things, I'm going to say underneath the surface, that deals with the governance issue I talked about, kind of formalizing the method, and also to put it at the correct level. It's, it's, and I'm speaking as a former fire chief, so please understand this. I know the fire chiefs I dealt with elsewhere and that I see across the county, across the country, I mean, can be kind of whiny sometimes. They want, you know, they, it's very easy to ask for more. As the commission, I'm sure you understand, you get requests all the time. I think to make sure that those issues are properly vetted, which is the recommendation for the governance piece, is to make sure that they're vetted so that they know those are heard, but also the decision has to rest where it belongs, with the chief administrative officers and the elected officials, particularly within the county. So the relationships were very good. This was just a little polish on the process.
Well, thank you very much for saying that. I was hoping that's what you would come up with because we all know how territorial some of these things can become, but with the right personnel, and it sounds like we do have the right personnel in place now, it's nice to see that it's not a problem.
I'll, I'll just say this to the entire board. I, it was a pleasure to do this project with, with your team and the support from everybody, from the county administrator and the sheriff, all the way down through the ranking file. It was a pleasure.
That kind of leads me, you've been in Florida, you've been in Chicago. Are you currently up here? Did you have to come up here to do this or did you do all this remotely?
No, I, I came up and spent several days up in the county, spent some time up there, was in the center for a couple of days, met with the sheriff, I think, a couple of times. I've had virtually both directly with the county administrator, the managers, police chief, but then virtually, I've probably had a half dozen meetings with the, those various parties, so.
Well, thank you very much for your work. Mr. Hemsey, you have a recommended action here, the motion to adopt the Carver County Public Safety Communication Advisory Board CAB resolution. Anything else to add?
Yeah, a couple of things to add before we get to that. First of all, I mentioned Chan and Chaska. I neglected to mention Lori Hokinen picked up the ball, got it across the finish line when Heather left, so want to acknowledge that, thanks to her and, and again, Matt. And we did share the cost, by the way. I don't have the number right in front of me. I don't remember sheriff. A few thousand bucks each is money well spent. And that's, that's the, the good news, and there's not a lot of high-level cost items built in here. You know, and I'm not, the sheriff and I need to talk about it, but maybe that supervisor position is not a new FTE, you know, maybe we can convert somebody. But with the, and thanks to Bruce, that's, that's one heck of a job, even with his firefighter background. We'll give him credit for that. You know, that last recommendation, we did wrestle a little bit with, the, the governance issue, and, and what we came up with is in front of you. We did talk to the city administrators about this and vet it with them, and they are an integral part of the recommendation. And again, it's not just about Chaska, Chan. We want to make sure this works for everybody in Carver County, every city. And really, that's what the intent is here to have, to create this, we're calling it another acronym to throw out there, Communications Advisory Board, so the CAB board. It's really to get at those items that Bruce mentioned at the, at the last of the list there, those, those policy-level issues, technology improvements at a high level. And the intent is not to cut out our fire chiefs or police, the police chief at Chaska certainly. There's plenty of opportunities to talk about things, but this formalizes the method of talking about items. And I'm not sure sheriff, if we're going to meet on a monthly basis or, or exactly how it's going to work, we'll have to talk about that further. But I did want to make sure we provide the sheriff, since, since he's.
Sheriff Camerud, if you want to take the podium.
He runs this place.
Yeah. You want to, any comment on this at this point?
Mr. Chair, members of board, I appreciate the opportunity to, to sit in on Bruce's presentation again. And, and Bruce, I really appreciate the work that you did. From my perspective, I think that the, the governance piece is, is very important. And, and the reason is, is some of the policies that we can make have no cost associated with them. And, and I think that, you know, as, as the elected sheriff and, and my predecessors, they all agreed that that would be an okay way, that would make those decisions. But for those that have costs associated, you know, obviously, as the sheriff, I need the county board to, to come to agreement on that. And we have those same issues with fire departments, because that's where our overlap is, right? And, and to a lesser extent with the police department in Chaska. But otherwise, we're the only law enforcement in the county, and so we, we don't have all of those competing interests that you might see in counties that surround us, right? But it's, it's nice, I believe it will be nice to have that second layer when there are competing interests that are unique to just one or two of the 11 agencies here. And we can make an assessment as the, the policymakers and the taxing authority on what the appropriate course is. And previously, that didn't exist, and, and that has been a little bit of a source of frustration. I, I agree with Bruce. I think overall, the relationships are, are good and they're strong and there's, there's some communication, but there's friction once in a while, and, and that happens, right? I mean, and reasonable people disagree. We've all seen it happen, but, but I think from my perch, that's probably one of the better takeaways. The technology piece, the standardized stuff, you know, we're able to use 911 fees for that, so that money is, is available and, and it comes through the taxpayers, but not through taxes, but through the, the 911 fees. And so I think that'll be a pretty doable piece to implement.
Oh, you mentioned the 911 fees. That's just on landlines, correct?
No, there are 911 fees associated with, with cell phones and.
So that has changed.
As, as Bruce pointed out, you know, about 80% of calls coming to the comm center come from cell phones nowadays, and, and that number is just increasing. And I just, I did want to circle back on the, on the St. Francis thing now that I think about it. Our Ridgeview Medical Center is the only ambulance service in Carver County right now, so we do not transfer calls to St. Francis, which is why Bruce would not have talked to them. Had it been 10, 15 years ago, when St. Francis had the east side of the county and Ridgeview with the west, why then we would have included them in this study, but.
So just to follow up on that, so somebody from the eastern part of the county, what do they have to request that Ridgeview takes them to St. Francis? Or are they going to automatically be taken up to Waconia?
The patient weighs in on that, on, on where they go, and so they might choose to go to Southdale. Ridgeview will run them wherever they need to go. Sometimes it has to do with what the patient requests. Sometimes it has to do with the, the specific injury, right? So Ridgeview and St. Francis are not prepared for significant burns, for example. That's HCMC. And so the, the ambulance service would just whistle them down to Minneapolis in that scenario.
I've read it along in both directions, so thank you. Any other questions for the sheriff? If not, we do have a proposed action item here. Is there a motion?
Don't move, Mr. Chair.
Second, Udoman.
Motion by Commissioner Lynch, second by Commissioner Udoman, to adopt the Carver County Public Safety Communication Advisory Board Resolution. Any discussion? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, Bruce.
Thank you, commissioners, Mr. Hemsey and sheriff.
Item 6.3, it's a resolution proclaiming April 4th through the 10th as a National Public Health Week. With that, we turn to Dr. Richard Scott, Deputy Division Director. Dr. Scott.
Chair Degler, thank you, commissioners. I really appreciate this opportunity to recognize the National Public Health Week for 2022. Officially, it was held last week, but obviously, since we weren't able to present the last couple of times, I appreciate this opportunity to, to present that today. The National Public Health Week has been recognized every year since 1995, and the theme for this year is "Public Health is Where You Are." And our public health advisory team, which is a broad-based, diverse group of people that was formed several years ago, had the insight to reflect the value that each of us play in promoting public health. When they came up with the vision that Carver County is a safe and, if I can read my own right, a, a safe and hel, a welcoming place where everyone belongs, all people are supported to be healthy throughout their lifespan, and everyone contributes to building a healthy, vibrant community. We, I feel that that vision statement really acknowledges the importance that public health is where you are. We all play a critical role in promoting public health. And Carver County's mission to support that vision is to promote and protect the health of all in Carver County and strives to adjust the many factors to promote health equity for all who live, learn, work, play, and I'd say even pray in Carver County. And I think this is a special year since obviously we're just coming out of two very challenging years with the pandemic. We have worked diligently for the provision of vaccinations, testing, essential services to mitigate the impact of COVID-19 pandemic, other public health concerns. And I believe if, from the last time I checked, Carver County has one of the lower fatality rates associated in Carver County in the state, and definitely considerably lower than the national average. So I think we've done a really good job. I look forward to having the opportunity to present to the commissioners next month when we, to share our report card on how we're doing with public health. The Robert Wood Johnson Foundation Community Profiles will be coming out the end of the month. You'll be receiving a packet on that. I'll have an opportunity, and hopefully, I'll share some of the things that we're doing collectively as a county that contribute to Carver County, having been one of the healthiest counties in Minnesota and one of the healthiest counties in the United States. Obviously, the work that we do could not happen without the collaboration of our community partners. We're also trying to get at the roots that cause and contribute to a healthy community, and sometimes those include improving housing, education, food security, transportation, safe environment, and healthy recreational activities. I know Commissioner Udoman alluded to the fact that we are fortunate to have the lowest poverty rate in Minnesota, and obviously, as a public health agency, we're concerned about all of our residents here in Carver County. And we are specifically charged, though, to work with those people that work on Lidl, to help them with their economic advancement, to give them the resources so that they can also contribute to this vibrant community. So we appreciate that. And one of the pleasures I have in my role as Deputy Division Director, not only do I overview or oversee public health, but I also have the opportunity to oversee mental health as well, our behavioral health department. And I was so happy this year when the National or the American Public Health Association recognized the importance of mental health. And so we also acknowledged that mental health is a core public health concern, and that prevention, early detection, and treatment of mental health conditions can lead to improve physical and community health for all of us. So with that recognition, I do make the recommendation for the commissioners to approve the resolution proclaiming the week of April 4th through 10th, 2022, as National Public Health Week.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Workman, second by Commissioner Udoman, to approve the resolution proclaiming the week of April 4th through the 10th as National Public Health Week. Any discussion? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Dr. Scott. Thank your staff and community partners, and keep up the good work.
Thank you.
With that, we're moving on to item 6.4, settlement agreements for the right-of-way acquisition for Highway 24 project. We have Mr. Pat Lambert, our senior right-of-way agent, talking to Mr. Lambert ahead of time. Basically, there's no real new information than what he's shared with us previously, but these are new settlements, and we have one commissioner that's going to abstain from this. So he brought it before the whole board. Mr. Lambert.
The settlements that are before you today are basically either last written offers that we were directed by the county board to offer the property owners before we file for eminent domain, or less. They're settlements that we had negotiated, but because of legal issues or whatever, couldn't get board approval until now. The one exception is one property owner actually owns three parcels on the project, and we had to adjust north of the last written offer because of tree replacement costs. We're taking down 54 trees on his property, and he got a cost estimate, a bona fide cost estimate from a landscape company, and so we basically met his price. It was probably $15,000 more than what the last written offer was, but it was a very good estimate that he got. Other than that, they're just, they speak for themselves.
Any questions for Patrick? If not, is there a motion? All right.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the settlement for the acquisition of the real property interest needed for the Highway 24 project as listed.
Motion made. Is there a second? Motion by Commissioner Fahy, second by Commissioner Workman. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Abstain? One abstention. With that, thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, commissioners.
Item number seven, Sheriff's Office Recognition and Proclamation. With that, the Sheriff Camrud stepped out for a minute. We'll go on, we'll skip, we'll go to 8.1, CEF Watertown Community Solar LLC, the CUP for Large Solar Energy. With that, we'll turn it over to Jason Melkey, Land Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and commissioners. Good morning, everybody. This is a conditional use permit request for a large solar energy system. We call it a large SES in the zoning code. The particular applicant, which is Cooperative Energy Futures, CEF Watertown Community Solar LLC, has a lease agreement in place with the current property owner, which is Curtis Lad. It's a 26-year lease agreement to utilize the property, and it is located in Section 3 of Watertown Township. On March 15th, the County Planning Commission voted to recommend approval of the conditional use permit request for up to one megawatt site. That was, that vote did take place, and it was a five-to-one vote. This particular property is an approximate 50-acre site. All of it is 100% non-tillable acreage. The particular operational area would be between seven and eight acres in size, would remain non-tillable, and as part of the process, it would have to meet the WMO's requirements for stormwater management and vegetation establishment, as well as the item does, or the request does meet the zoning code standards pursuant to Chapter 152.075. During the public hearing, there was opposition to the request, but there was also support of the request. I just wanted to acknowledge that. And the Watertown Town Board did recommend denial of the conditional use permit request during their March 7, 2022 meeting. Their recommendation did indicate the denial was based on some neighbor concerns and based on the landowner not living on the property. As we all know, the county follows state statute guidelines 394, and that established that legislation does allow us to act as the authority for the land use activities, which we are currently doing with the zoning code and the comprehensive plan. Take this a step further, you know, the township has gone forward and created their own ordinance. They can be more strict than what the county's guidelines are. However, we, as the authorities, still follow our county's guidelines, and it is up to the township to follow their standards. They do not want to take on the entire land use authority. They just want to have an application process that would require somebody to get an interim use permit, and also require that the property be homesteaded and occupied, the residents be occupied. So with that being said, the applicant did submit an application for an interim use permit to the Watertown Town Board. They did review the request, and the request was denied for failing to meet the residency requirement. Again, the item does meet all of the county's guidelines pursuant to the zoning code and the comprehensive plan, and it would also need to follow the stormwater management guidelines, as would any project that we have moved through the process. With that being said, I'm looking for a motion, I guess, to adopt the findings of fact and issue order PZ 2022-0008 for the approval of this conditional use permit. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Jason?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Udoman.
I'm just curious, what happens in year 26 or any time before that if the property's abandoned, or the panels don't work, or they're not making money on it? Do we have any recourse if it's intended to be solar and it just isn't profitable, so they walk away?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Udoman, that question's come up many times over the years-- That we've been doing this, and we've always viewed, the county as a whole viewed these lease agreements between a property owner, property owner rights, and the solar company to make sure that they have an established agreement. We do it as a conditional use permit in the zoning code that allow, the lease agreement is between the property owner and the solar company. If said solar company after year 26 decides to move on, conditional use permit runs with the land. So somebody else, I could start a solar company or whatever, and go through the same process. Actually, they don't have to go back through the process, they just have to comply with the current standards that are in play.
Yep. Okay. Other questions? I got a couple, just to, is this solar company have any ties with Nextera?
Commissioner Degler, board, I'm not exactly sure on that. I know that the applicants are in the audience here and might be able to speak to that.
Okay. Now, that's, I saw a shake on the head, so that answers that. This is a 25-year lease. Most solar leases are, let's say, 25 with another option for another 25. Do we have any say with that second 25?
Commissioner Degler, we, the information we've been provided is that the solar company has a 26-year lease agreement. I'm guessing the 26 is 25 years of running in the first year of going through the process and getting it constructed, and then once it's constructed and up and running, that'll get them their 25 years. After the 25 years, it's up to the solar company to renegotiate, I guess, with said property owner if they choose to continue on.
Does it come back to us, then?
It would not. It would not. As long as the new solar company complies with the current conditions that are in place, a conditional use permit runs with the land. If they needed to modify the conditions in any way, shape, or form, then it would come back through this process and would need to comply with the current ordinance guidelines that are in play.
Okay, on page 89 of the packet, you list a $38,000 amount to ensure proper decommissioning. Who set that number? Who sets the number? Who set that number? Maybe the applicant can explain?
Yeah, Commissioner Degler, I think the number is established by the applicant. We have not been involved with establishing any sort of decommissioning cost. That number would be based on what they feel it would take for decommissioning purpose--
But I asked the applicant--
Absolutely.
Please come up, identify yourself, and I'm learning a lot more about solar than I ever did in the past.
Yeah. Thank you, Chair and Board. My name is Dan Grantir, I'm with Cooperative Energy Futures. Just a little background on us, we are a, just a co-op, we're a cooperatively-owned solar developer, so all of our member owners that are subscribers to our services are also membership owners. So we're not involved with Nextera or any other large developers.
So are you an operator-owner, or are you an owner-flipper?
We're not a flipper, so we are long-term owners.
Thank you.
We're going to own this project for the life of the project. And as for, I'm sorry, was your question about decommissioning or--
Right. Where did that 38,000--
Yes.
What's that based on?
So we just do our best guess to try and estimate what the labor will be to take down all the materials, the fencing, the foundations, everything, to restore the property back to its original state. And then we also try and factor in what may be some recycling benefits that we can get from recycling those. Recycling is a nascent industry here in the United States, but it's, with all the solar that's going on, it's, we're hoping that in 25 years, it'll be an established practice, and that'll help mitigate some of those costs of decommissioning.
I realize this property currently hasn't, isn't farmable, or isn't tillable, or hasn't been till, I should say, but it could be tillable. After 25 years, if there was tile in the ground now, and given another 25 years, plus the fact that you're going to be driving and pounding and then pulling out, do you ever replace the tile? Is that something that you can put in your agreement with the landowner? It has nothing to do with the county, I'm just asking a question.
Right. Yeah, you know, we are happy to, I mean, our goal is to have a decommissioning plan that will literally bring the land back to where it is today before we ever step foot on it, so whatever that would take.
I mean, obviously, most of us will not be around 25, 26 years from now, and you extend it for another 25, whatever, but some of you will be, but some of us won't be. Landowner policy. That's all the questions I have right off the bat. Commissioner Fahy, you sit on the planning commission, you have any comments or questions?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. We talked about it at length at our March Planning Commission meeting, and we discussed all of the various county guidelines that Jason had alluded to, and we were very comfortable with making the recommendation, and I would make a motion to adopt the findings of fact and issue order number PZ 2022-0008 for the approval of this CUP.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second, Udoman.
Motion by Commissioner Fahy, second by Commissioner Udoman. Any discussion? Commissioner Lynch.
Mr. Chair, if I could, I'd like to compliment the applicant. It's the first time I've ever heard that they plan to own the project for the entire, you know, usually, like you said, you ask them if they're a flipper, and a lot of times they get their project and they sell it right away, so they plan and own it. I think that's commendable.
I will agree with that wholeheartedly. I'd like to talk to them later, but off the logbook. Any other comments in the discussion? All in favor, hearing the motion, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
And with that, we'll revert back to 7.1, Sheriff's Office Recognition. Sheriff Camrud, welcome.
Chair members of the board, I appreciate you giving me a few more minutes of your time and letting me come back and talk about these proclamations that we have submitted for you. You know, in, the timing on this one's actually pretty good. We are in National Telecommunicators Week this week, right? Started yesterday, and we just had the dispatch review study posted that, I wish I could say that was deliberate, it was not, it was just how the calendar worked out. But as you learned, you know, earlier, the dispatchers are really the first responders. They are the, in, all calls begin and end with them, and so it's a great opportunity to recognize their great work and professionalism through the proclamation, April 10 through 16 this year. Later this month, we will have the National Administrative Professionals Day, which is April 27. And in our office, these, this is the team that kind of, the glue that holds us all together, so to speak, in the office, and they are the point of contact. If you call down to the sheriff's office, or you come to the front window, you will be dealing directly with our administrative professionals, and, you know, we want to recognize their service. And we will do that internally on April 27. National Correctional Officers Week, as you know, we are statutorily obligated to maintain a jail, and the first full week in May is National Correctional Officers Week. Our detention staff are critical because, A, we're statutorily obligated to do it, but B, they are the ones that make sure that the people who are in our custody, most of whom have not yet been convicted of a crime, they are innocent until proven guilty. These are the men and women who make sure that they are served and treated with respect and dignity while they're in our facility. And so May 1 through May 7, we will be celebrating their good work and accomplishments. Along that same, during that same week, May 6 is National Nurses Day. We have nurses through contract who work, are embedded in our facility completely, who provide healthcare to the inmates, and so we will celebrate their good work on May 6. And then lastly, we have National Police Week is May 15 through the 21st. And, you know, this has been a really challenging time for law enforcement these last several months, and so to publicly recognize them through this proclamation and recognition of their heroic work and efforts, I think, is critical. of their heroic work and efforts, I think, is critical for us. And in that week, May 15 is, pardon me, National Peace Officers Memorial Day, and that is where we recognize those officers who made the ultimate sacrifice in performance of their duties, or had become disabled in the performance of their duties. And so with that, I would ask that the board, you know, accept a resolution to approve these proclamations and to recognize the employees here in Carver County.
You've heard the sheriff's request, any comments?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'll move approval, and proudly so, for all these great, great individuals. We do have a little bit of a typo on page 81, it's listed at the top, 991 dispatchers. We should not-
It's a faster service?
Not let that out of the bag. People get used to 99, calling 991, I don't know where that goes.
Good catch.
But, uh-
I would second.
A motion by Commissioner Workman, second by Commissioner Lynch, to approve the proclamations. Any discussion? Commissioner Urdeman?
Mr. Chair, Dr. Scott was in here, Sheriff Camerud, recognition is important to the culture of our community. I also did some research, recognition increases engagement, productivity, and performance by 14%, so sometimes these feel like small and insignificant efforts, they aren't. So I appreciate you taking the time to do that, to be here in person and to share that and to pass along. Our kudos to your team and recognition of these things that you brought forth today. So thank you for doing that.
I think this board clearly recognizes the importance of you and your office and all the workers that you have joining you in that endeavor, and we thank you for that. So we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. And with that, we come to the end of our business as a county board, and we need a motion to adjourn as the county board and reconvene as the regional railroad authority.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Second, Urdeman.
Motion by Commissioner Lynch, second by Commissioner Urdeman, to adjourn and then reconvene as the regional rail. Any discussion? All in, seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. We are now serving as the regional rail authority. With that, I'll call Mr. Marty Walsh, our Parks and Recreation Director, up. Welcome, Mr. Walsh. And the first thing on the docket is agreement for the use of CCRA property for Highway 41-61 improvements, trail underpass.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members. So we're waiting for our presentation to kind of activate here. There we go. So we have a couple of topics to talk to you today about in terms of regional rail authority. The first one here is a project in the city of Chaska. And so Chaska's looking for a permit agreement for use of CCRA property for pedestrian and bicycle underpass and trail. How do we get the screen to work?
Colin?
Colin, we need the screen up, please.
See, at home, it just takes a bigger hammer. I mean, I was just going to recommend against it, Mr. Chair. There we go.
There we go. So just some background information, I know we've got a couple of new board members that maybe haven't dealt so much with regional rail authority property. So back in about 2011, we acquired the Union Pacific Railroad Corridor as it runs through Chaska, it's 5.6 miles in total length, which also extended in the Scott County. Carver County purchased their line and then transferred, transferred the ownership to the Carver County Regional Rail Authority. So it was initially funded with Metropolitan Council funds, and then later, by agreement, transferred over to the Carver County Regional Rail Authority. The railroad comes with a number of conditions, and several of those are pointed out here. When the railroad went through an abandonment process, it had to go through the Surface Transportation Board. Those conditions continue to keep the railroad for future transportation use. It's permitted as an interim use, trail activities, and, you know, Carver County Regional Rail Authority is ultimately the one that's administering the property, both in terms of its ongoing operating costs and legal, has legal liability for it. On the UP conditions, in agreements with public and private utilities. So when we got the railroad corridor, it came with a number of crossings, largely utility crossings, and some other uses. So that was part of the conditions that we got from UP. We got the whole package related to the corridor. It comes with, I'll say, some other, railroads had great authority, and sometimes they were able to take property back then. In the case through Chaska here, the streets were established before the railroad, so there's little gaps, there's little gaps in what the actual ownership is of the railroad corridor. Yeah, so we got what the railroad had, they didn't have everything. Moving along here, so Carver County and City of Chaska have been working on road improvements for Highway 41 and County Road 61. These improvements involve, I'll say, better pedestrian vehicle movement, improvements for public safety, provides some beautification in terms of streetscaping, and there's some stormwater management, which would also occur on regional rail authority property for those improvements. And construction is planned for this summer, my schedule indicates that on or about July is when the activities would start for construction. So these planned improvements for the regional rail authority are consistent with a number of documents, they're consistent with both, what I'll say is local, the city of Chaska's planned improvements, as well as the draft Southwest Regional Trail Master Plan and Minnesota River Bus Regional Trail Master Plan. And you have not seen the amendments to that, that's coming to you here at a future meeting, but just to let you know that is consistent with our existing planning documents. It does provide, this permitted activity does provide, what I'll say is some key infrastructure, pedestrian underpass at Highway 41 just south of our County Road 61. And one of the other features of the corridor here in terms of what I'll say is its consistency, this corridor, this railroad corridor that leads into Scott County, part of the old Union Pacific Railroad Corridor, is identified as what's known as a regional bikeway transit network. It is a more significant trail alignment, and you can see that on the slide here, it does eventually link to Hopkins, and from Hopkins you can get to Minneapolis on that corridor. So moving along here, again, just to kind of give you and the others in the audience a bit of a look at things, so this is the Union Pacific Railroad Corridor as it ran through downtown Chaska towards Athletic Park. Chaska has a plan for what they call Circle the Brick Trail, that's this red alignment, that's a part of that alignment. And then the location marked on this map here is really about where the project will take place. A little closer look at, again, the intersection of Highway, County Road 61 and County Road 41, and here is the alignment of the former Union Pacific Railroad. And this is where the underpass would take place. So it's a fairly flat area right now, if you've driven that area, it's very flat. The excavation for this actually begins about a block in either direction, so there's a grade that gets you down underneath Highway 41. And so it's a fairly significant, really significant project that has a lot of retaining walls, a lot of sidewalks, and then I'll also point out that a portion of the corridor is also going to be used for some stormwater management here. So there's a long, narrow retention pond that is also proposed on regional rail authority Taking another little look at things that are, you know, this happens to be the mill, and you can kind of see the improvements here, the trail back towards Pine Street, I believe, and then it starts to what I'll say is descend underneath Highway 41. But you can see that this is an extensive infrastructure, sidewalks on either side of this, retaining walls, trail, and then the tunnel or box culvert that would go underneath, again, a bit of a close-up look at that. We do want to mention some things with regards to the permit. So Chaska is responsible for the project, and really is receiving our permit with the understanding that the property that we have is in and as is condition. And not only are we going to be responsible for the construction activity, we know that the railroad corridor has some issues with regards to, well, I'll say, some contamination, they're quite aware of that. And again, we're giving them a permit for what we know we have, and if there's any, anything that's kind of contested with regards to, I'll say, existing permits or ownership, that too is also borne by the city of Chaska to take that on if that would arise. And then Chaska would be responsible for the ongoing maintenance, operations, legal liability, and insurance. It does not remove other utilities from the corridor, so the Chaska is responsible for making sure that whatever utilities are there get realigned. And the regional rail authority continues to maintain oversight of the, of its property, and CCRA at a later date may assume some responsibilities here for a future track. Again, into the future here, it's envisioned that what Chaska is constructing here would be a part of the regional trail system. But as it is today, it is not consistent with our existing master plans. Those master plans are in the process of being revised, and then ultimately will be here before you for approval. So with that, Mr. Chair, the motion is to approve an agreement between CCRA and the city of Chaska, allowing Chaska to use CCRA real property to construct, operate, maintain underpass, retaining wall, sidewalks, public recreational trail, landscaping and related appurtenance upon completion of the contract review process.
Questions? Commissioner Urdeman?
I'm just going to move it.
Oh. Any other questions first, before we get the motion? Question, Marty, I have. When they did the underpass under 41 up by Highway 5, they ended up with beautiful slopes for skateboarders, and how did they consider that? How are they not going to have that problem here?
You know, that's a great question. I don't know if I can get into a lot of detail on that. There is obviously going to be some fencing around the sides of that that Chaska is going to install with the, with the project. There's sidewalks in the area, and, you know, as I would believe, Chaska is not going to, I'll say, authorize the use of skateboards in that area, it's just a-
You know the concern because they have-
Yep, I know the concerns, yep.
And with that graffiti, obviously, they had graffiti in the other tunnel, is that a Chaska enforcement issue?
Right now, that, you know, in terms of the maintenance of that, would be Chaska, and then if we ourselves would notice that, we would bring it to their attention and then to remove the graffiti.
And this is a rail corridor, transportation, I doubt if it's ever going to come into play, but if by chance there was going to be a rail, whatever form it takes, who's responsible for taking this tunnel down or replacing, filling it, whatever?
And that's a great question. Right now, that ultimate responsibility would be borne by the city of Chaska if that was to happen, but as you're pointing out, we don't envision that happening, and it would be a much, much larger, much larger project.
And now, just a quick question, because I go by it so often, there were some trees on the corridor that have been removed within the last month or so. Was that work that was done unauthorized? I mean, now, after we approve this, I would say it's part of the project, but in the meantime, what happened?
Yeah, that's a good question. I don't know the full details behind that, but at this time of the year is the appropriate time to remove, move trees for the project. So I'm guessing that was part of the staging for work to take, take place. There's also some other conflicts over there with power lines and so forth, so I'm not quite certain what triggered that, what removal of those trees.
And do we, who's responsible for going through, I figure, the watershed or the DNR, whatever, to make holding ponds in that area? If I go dig out stuff, I got to get permits from somebody.
Yep. Again, everything will be properly permitted through the appropriate process.
Okay. Now, back to Commissioner Urdeman, you had a motion.
I move approval.
Is there a second?
No. I had a question. Go ahead.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Urdeman, second by Commissioner Workman. More discussion, Commissioner Lynch.
Quick question, Marty, how long is 41 going to be closed?
Darren, any question?
Half a day.
I got to scratch my head on this, I don't know how long that-
Is this in connection-
I can get back to you with that information.
With another project that 41 is going to, you know, in the future, 41's going to be upgraded and whatever, the city of Chaska's been working for a long time on that. Is this in connection with that?
The downtown project, yes.
So when it's closed, they'll do two birds with one stone? Okay.
The closer of 41 will be actually next summer, it'll be all summer.
And this digging will probably be next summer? Yep. We're just getting the preliminary. Other questions? Commissioner Workman?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I don't know how this could be, other than heading west, southwest, could be a rail corridor. Chaska did build over the old, the city fathers had previously built over the old, the east end of this thing, which is how it got wiggling around on top of the dike and everything else, but which was kind of odd, I think, in the day. But I can remember, well, two things. One, I can remember hitching a ride on a boxcar to get into town from Sandy Acres on trains. It was a boyhood dream yard, watching cars come in in the fall, full of sugar beets, and offloading these huge piles of stuff. And if you snuck around the sugar factory and behind, you could see them bottom unload these things into a big stream, and it went into the process, and people would yell at us and everything else. And I don't remember how I got home, probably some county warrant officers.
Ride along?
Yeah. But this is a great thing, and I remember at this intersection, boxcars flopping over. This wasn't very good track through town, and, or they didn't want to do much with it, and, but boxcars, you don't forget that as a young person, a boxcar sitting on its side in the middle of your little hometown. But it looks like, and maybe we need the, the people that are using the old feed mill there, size comes to mind, because it looks like where most of us enter into the, into the building there to have a little lunch are going to be redirected, and going to have to pay attention when I'm coming out of size, and so don't fall and break my chin on something. But this is a great, great connection. I always wondered why Chaska kind of wiggle-waggle it around town onto the dike, I think it was available, and, but not a preferred, it's pretty, kind of pretty to go back behind the courthouse here in the dike, but this looks like, this is something that I think would really help downtown Chaska, and so I've been long excited about it, so.
Yeah, and I think it's going to end up, or a spot next to our license center, and could be future other things in that area, so. Commissioner Lynch?
I just want to point out, it's amazing when I find out about my fellow commissioners. One asked about skateboarding because he's thinking about taking it up, and my other commissioner over here is a hobo. He sees, he sees cars laying over in a small town and thinks it's a good idea to hop on them. But, no, this is going to be a wonderful thing, I just also wanted to point out that it's going to be closed for an extended period of time, there's a lot of grain that actually flows across that, that bridge, so it's absolutely wonderful that we took the lead several years ago in Public Works, I see Darren here, that we built 101, so they can get over to Shakopee where they sell their grain, so.
Any other discussion? We do have the motion made and seconded, so all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item 9.2, the contract for Lake Waconia North Shore stabilization.
Mr. Chair and members, I am going to take this opportunity to introduce Jacob Sandvig. He is our Parks and Natural Resources Supervisor. If not had a chance to meet him under the current or previous conditions, so he's not been formally introduced to you. And so he is going to take on this next portion of the presentation, so with that, Jacob Sandvig.
Welcome, Jacob. You notice when Marty has some heavy lifting to do, he turned it over to you, so.
Absolutely, thank you, Mr. Chair. Morning, everyone. Today I'll be presenting the Lake Waconia North Shore Stabilization Project. Here's a enlarged view of Lake Waconia and the location of the project, which is going to be on the north shore. An enlarged view shows the intersection between the Dakota Rail Trail and North Shore Road. Also, or sorry, this picture on the left shows the problem at hand. You can see where the erosion is happening along the Dakota Rail Trail down towards the lake. The gravel bed there has actually been filled in by staff to help stabilize the erosion from foot traffic. That picture itself faces west, and the picture on the right faces east. Also there, you can see the problem at hand.
When I was looking at this last night, I thought, boy, that's a real narrow road, and duh.
Yes, bike trail, yes.
Yeah.
Facing that narrow road, the Dakota Rail Trail, the picture on the left also faces south towards the lake. Here, the problems with erosion can greatly, you can greatly see them here, the foot traffic going down. People are going down there and causing very bad embankment problems. The picture on the right then shows the location facing north, once again, addressing the erosion With this project, the main concerns, I've stated a couple times here, eroded embankment, stormwater runoff, there is excessive foot traffic from the regional trail down to the shoreline, and the bituminous surface is jeopardized by the condition as well, potentially causing greater conditions or greater failures to the asphalt trail. The contractor, we have plans for various stabilization items with the contractor, the installation of riprap, excavating, and embankment grading, improvement of the culvert drainage and geotextile filter, installation of fencing between the Dakota Rail Trail and the north shore row, or the north shore of Lake Waconia. Also, live plantings, which include dogwoods, willows, and a various seed mixture will be planted to help stabilize the embankment. And then, during this whole process, after the excavation and grading will be done, erosion controlled blankets will help stabilize the surface.
Just a quick question. You mentioned you're going to replace some dogwoods and willows. On those previous photographs, it looked like it was wooded on both sides, except right where we had a problem.
Correct, yep.
Was there vegetation there at one time that was removed, or it just happened that there wasn't any, and obviously, it's close, it's a nice way to go down?
From my memory, there was certain vegetation there, but with the foot traffic and the shores, you can actually see when you go down there, I don't know if this one picture shows it, you can see that fallen tree.
Oh, yeah.
Right here. So, we did have greater vegetation there, but with the conditions, we're seeing that it's just disappearing down the lakeside.
Thank you.
Here's a representation of the site plan. I want to point out the installation of the fence, which is going to be about 100 feet, about 10 segments, or, yeah, about 10 to 12 segments, eight feet apart, to help reduce the foot traffic coming from the trail down towards the lake. This section right here represents the pictures that I took. There weren't any vegetation. And these, I guess, rectangles represent the stepped retaining wall, which will house the dogwoods, willows, and also the seed mixture. And below that point is the riprap location.
I hate to get picky. When you say fence, my mind goes to something different than, what kind of fence you're putting up?
A black plastic, similar to a residential fence, a black, a black fence.
Oh, something that people aren't just going to step over and?
Correct. Yep, correct. Six to eight feet in height.
Chain link.
Chain link, correct, yep.
Okay.
And there's currently fence in that area similar to that?
Yes, I'll back up here a second. Along this section of the lake, we have an extensive amount of fence. I don't have the actual distance off the top of my head, but there's that overlook with the bench that faces the lake. So, right there, it would be similar to that fencing.
And we installed the fence at that time for the similar reason that people were?
I don't believe foot traffic was a main concern there, but the steep, the slope does drop off fairly quickly, so I assume safety was a main concern.
Thank you.
Good point out, thank you. And to kind of wrap up this presentation with the benefits, which include preserving the existing asphalt surface, restoring the embankment, installation of fencing, which eliminates the foot traffic, the stormwater runoff is addressed, and also, this project restores the two-foot clear zone along the trail, which enhances safety for the user. So, if you fall off your bike, you have a two-foot zone where you can land in grass. And with that, Mr. Chair, I motion to contract with Schneider Excavating and Grading, Inc., pending finalization of the contract review process.
Heard the recommendation. Who wants to make a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'll make that motion, but I just want to comment first, I've been fortunate to run and bike on that trail quite a bit, and it's definitely needed to be fixed. And then, that comment about the fence, that fencing has worked extremely well in the past, and people have stayed off of that fence. So, it won't be uncommon for them to see another additional section of that fence. So, I'll make that motion to contract with Schneider Excavating and Grading, pending the finalization of the contract review.
So, how long does it take to get from the trail down to the water? I figure you're the one that caused a lot of erosion.
I would second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Fahy, seconded by Commissioner Lynch. Is there any discussion? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item 9.3, letters of support for grant applications for trail projects on the CCRR property.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to, I'm going to take this one on as well.
Sure.
It's that time of the year where we do make grant applications for trail projects. We have two trail projects that are planned on regional rail authority property. One project is from, essentially from Bluff Creek Drive to Pioneer Trail, to pave that section of unpaved trail. And the other project that we are making a grant application for is a section of trail along Highway 41. It's the, excuse me, just one moment here. Section of trail that is the Merriam, excuse me, Merriam Junction Trail. So, this is the trail that the Union Pacific Railroad Corridor, as it goes into Scott County, you're probably aware that Scott County's made several attempts at trying to restore the trail, coming across from Scott County into Carver County to get onto our trail system. And so, this, the other application is for that, that project. Well, those two projects and requesting letters of support for it.
Any discussion or any questions for Marty? We heard the recommendation, is there a motion?
I would, I would move to approve your letter, sir.
I would second. I would second it, Mr. Chairman, and if you thought I would get excited about a tunnel, this is maybe 10 times.
So, if we're paving this trail, are we going to have to put speed limit signs up? Because if Workman gets on that bike, he's going to downhill that whole way.
But everybody's going to get arrested for rolling through the stop signs. I'm sorry, I'm still sore, but.
Any other discussion? I have a motion and seconded. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Before we adjourn, we'll turn it over to County Administrator, Mr. Hemsley, for any reports.
Just a note on calendars, your upcoming meetings are, of course, in your packet, but thank you, Commissioner Udoman. Had a great idea to create the ongoing rolling list of regular session, work session items. It's always a challenge to juggle many balls. I try and keep meetings three hours or less. We'll probably go over a little bit today. But if you have suggestions, ideas, the idea is to try and keep that list up to speed, talk to division directors and others. Diane does a great job with it. She'll filter those things. At this point, I'm not planning on expanding it to other kinds of meetings, but regular session, work session, so.
Good, thank you.
If you have thoughts in mind, things you want to talk about, things you don't see on there, just talk to Diane or I, and we'll try and plug it in at the right spot. So, that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Anything else before we adjourn? Just note that with all the stuff that happened today, Diane was only, what, maybe 10 minutes, five minutes off? She is right on the button.
Oh, yeah.
So, with that, Commissioner Workman.
So, I was out in the hall and got caught by the gentleman who had a light problem with the CUP near him, et cetera, and he wanted to know how he could get on, on our agenda so that he could, so that it could be presented that these neighbors are going to pay for a fence or whatever else. And I said, that sounds like a county attorney or planning and zoning issue about whether or not there's even the right to, to do that. It would seem like, somebody would have to examine the CUP to see if, or, or any other part of the agreement as to whether or not that's something. I mean, I don't know that we could demand that that neighbor build a fence outside of what is the CUP and, or get, get automatic shut off, or what do we call those, motion So, I was kind of looking at him side-eyed there, just because I, I don't know. I mean, we could, we could certainly put something on an agenda to, to talk about it, but I don't know that the CUP holder would even need to come in or feel responsible he had to do any of that, so.
I'm looking at both Mr. Hemsley and our county attorney. What is the process? Can the board initiate action on an existing CUP? We're referring back to this light issue that the gentleman was concerned about earlier in the meeting.
Well, I would say, first of all, we're working on this behind the scenes a lot, along with Commissioner Fahy in particular. We're trying to figure out ways to solve the issues. I would say at this time, there's nothing that I see that, that I would bring forward to put on an agenda. Stay tuned on that. Now, having said that, this kind of back to the, that calendaring, if any board member wants an issue on the agenda, please come to me and we'll talk about it, try and, try and work through the issues. Sometimes, I'll say, does that make sense? Or sometimes I won't, and you'll say, I don't care, I want it on there, right? So, generally, we can, we can work through those items, but in this case, not at this point. But believe me, we're working on trying to resolve not only this concern, but as we move forward, we talk in a work session about enforcement and how can we maybe sharpen some teeth, if nothing else, in some of the CUP language, et cetera. But, you know, again, in this case, it's an existing CUP, so we'd have to go back all the way around the horn, back through the planning commission process. And I don't, I don't see that as an actionable item either at this point.
Other concerns at this point, before we adjourn? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
I would move to adjourn and note that we're going into a work session.
Second, Udoman.
Well said. We have a motion to adjourn and announce that we are going into a work session. All in favor of the motion to adjourn, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned. Thank you. We'll take a five-minute break.
You have an update tonight?